Kalam alaikum.
Waalaikumsalam. Brother Umar, can you hear us?
Yes, yes.
A couple of minutes for people to join in. Perhaps we can start. Brother Umar, are you with us?
Yes, please go ahead.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah rabbil 'alameen. Wassalamu alaikum wa sallam ala i'shraaf l'ambiyayi wal musalini. Nabiyya Muhammad wa ala ali b'sahbi hajma'in. Rabb israhi thadri wa yasir li amri wa ala l'ukhtatam min lisanii yaftahu qawli. Excellencies, distinguished guests, industry colleagues. Waalaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuhu and a very good day to all of you joining us from different parts of the world. On behalf of Accounting and Auditing Organization for Islamic Financial Institutions and its partners for this particular public hearing, Bahrain Association of Banks and Capital Market Authority, Uman, we welcome you to this very important public hearing on the exposure drafts of AOFI accounting, financial accounting standards on two very important standards. The two standards are related to Takaful and these are presentation and disclosure in the financial statements of the Takaful institutions and accounting for the Takaful recognition and measurement. We are thankful to our co-organizers for extending their support for this very important public hearing, in particular for the GCC market, but of course, given that this is a virtual session, it is open for everyone. We at AOFI tend to organize at least four public hearing sessions on any one public or any one standard that is about to be finalized in general and this happens out of the four public hearing, at least one of them tends to be in Arabic. Today's session is for about four hours, starting from now onwards till 2:00 PM Bahrain time. We will have a half an hour break after the completion of the presentation of the first standard. We highly encourage you to help us in this very important event today and a very important part of the overall standards development process, which we call public hearing, through this event to share your feedback and comment on the standards that are put forward or presented to you during this event today. The feedback and comments can be of any nature. It can be, you can ask, you are free to ask your questions, you are free to raise concerns, you are free to raise raise any, any, any errors that you may have noticed during the, through the exposure drafts that you must have gone through. In case you have not gone through the exposure draft, we will shortly put them again on the, on, put them again on the chat window, so kindly go through them. In case you cannot provide all your feedback during this event today, we will be holding more events on these two standards in the future and you are free to share any questions, comments, queries on our emails, in particular for accounting-related standards using accounting@aofi.com to share your feedback and concerns and Insha Allah we will resolve and get back to you on those. Today's session, we would like it to be more interactive rather than one-way monologue. The session will be presented by Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari, the Secretary General of AOFI and we would ask you and request you to ask any questions that you have using the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of your screen. Please do not use the chat window for any questions and comments, any, any questions in general, you can be free to reuse it for comments. Please use the Q&amp;A tab. In this way, we can manage your questions well and of course, time it well as well. In case you wish to ask questions by voice, we may allow that. Please raise your hand and we may allow that, depending, subject to the time availability. With that in the background, one last bit I would like to share that the presentation that will be presented to you is exactly same as the exposure draft, which is available on our AOFI website and has already been shared with you. So, we do not tend to share a PowerPoint presentation of this session. However, it is exactly same as what has been presented to you, what had been presented using the exposure draft document. So, with that in mind, we thank you once again for joining us. We had about 400 people registered for this session today. A lot have joined and hopefully some more will join in the, in the process and please use this opportunity to learn, educate yourselves, ask your questions, relate you to the topic itself on the Takaful as we are today. So, with that, let me hand over to the Secretary General of AOFI, Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari, to present the standards and to also welcome you. Thank you.
A'udzubillahimina shaitanirrajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Rabb israhi shaddri wa yasir li amri. Wa halul l'ukhtatam min lisanii yaftahu qawli. Thank you, brother Dr. Rizwan Malik, for the introduction and of the, of the session and for the whole effort to the, to the whole team for making this event possible. Welcome everybody today for this important discussion on one of the important topics of Islamic finance accounting. This, this, this event particularly has importance because from AOFI's perspective, after a long time, we are revising our Takaful accounting, financial accounting standards. So, it's very important for us to keep in contact with the market, keep connected to the market, take the market feedback during our standard setting process. I repeat it many times and that, and it's, there is no harm in repeating it again, that our, our ex-governor, our ex-chairman of the governance ethics board said that standard setting is not something that can happen in a room or in a boardroom. It is something that can happen only when you interact with the market and you ensure that the market understands the standards, you understand the market and the market input is obtained for the purpose of standard setting. Standard setting is not only about harmonizing the things. Yes, harmonizing is the most important part of standardization that things across the board, across the jurisdiction, across the globe should be standardized as maximum as possible to get the benefits of harmonized practices. But at the same time, it's also about setting the best practices, setting the standards where everybody need to make efforts to achieve those levels. Our, our standard setting process tries to keep a balance between the two. We try to understand and reflect what are the market needs and market norms and market realities and market necessities. But at the same time, we do not compromise on the specific characteristics of Islamic financial instruments. We do not compromise on the, on the Sharia side, Sharia principles and rules which apply and which affect accounting and treatments. Here, it is also important to mention that in recent years, AOFI's strategy for financial accounting standards is clear that we want to keep our standards closer to IFRS and other internationally developed standards in different areas. Even we do not want to reinvent the wheel, we do not want to repeat what is written in other standards. We do not want to replicate other standards just for the sake of having the standards. We, for every standard that we develop, we first ask ourselves a question as to whether this standard is actually going to add value to the industry. For the purpose of value addition, it has to be meeting two very specific criteria as I mentioned. First is Sharia compliance, that compliance with Sharia principles and rules means that we are afraid that if the conventional financial accounting standards are used, there might be some of the Sharia aspects which are compromised. For example, discounting of principles, how the profit and loss are distributed and attributed to different stakeholders, what is the timing of revenue, of recognition of revenue or a timing of recognition of an asset or timing of recognition of a liability or what is, what is a liability or not according to Sharia. These are the Sharia principles and rules which are actually impacted during the accounting. Those friends who are interested in understanding from how we derive them, they are suggested to read AOFI's new conceptual framework of financial reporting, which includes some of these aspects in our specific chapter as well, as to how the Sharia rules are interpreted into accounting rules. The second reading, suggested reading is AOFI's publication called IFRS and Sharia-Based Reporting, where we have identified the important aspects of Sharia compliant accounting and where, where the IFRS or other generally accepted accounting principles do not meet the Sharia criteria. This is part one, Sharia principles and rules. Part two is the specific characteristics of Islamic finance transactions and structures, which means that we, we, we still develop a standard even if we believe that, that it's not primary a Sharia issue, but the IFRS application to Islamic finance structures and transactions might not be reflecting the true nature of Islamic finance structures and institutions and transactions. So, that is the situation where we still believe that the value addition is there from AOFI's perspective. If, if the industry follow our standard, they will be better reflecting the economic reality, they will be better reflecting the business facts. Again, I would quote one of our, our mentors who said that accounting, accounting does not dictate anything. Accounting is just a reflection of the business facts. For Islamic financial institution where the structures are based on Sharia principles and rules, it becomes more and more important that the structure and the institutional relationship and the stakeholders' rights and obligations all are understood in a manner and reflected in a manner in accounting that it actually, actually reflects the true nature of the transaction and instruction. This is where we actually differ from IFRS. So, this is the reason that when new IFRS are come in, we evaluate them from that perspective as well as to whether they apply to Islamic finance in the same manner or not. I believe that I have taken a bit of time in this sort of preamble sort of discussion, but actually, this is very important to understand why we are developing these standards. What is the, what is the thought process behind these standards? AOFI in past had four standards already on the Takaful side, one on the general presentation and disclosure, one on the contribution accounting, one on the surplus accounting and one on provisions and deserves accounting. So, one on, we would say one on presentation and disclosure and three on the specific aspects of accounting. AOFI in 2011/12 started a project, 12/13 started a project for revision of these standards. It was discussed that we need to revise those standards and we need to come up with, we need to sort of, you know, come up with, with, with something closer to IFRS and improving because these standards were issued long time back. However, at that point of time, IFRS four had come up from the, from the International Accounting Standard Board and, and towards, towards the mid-level discussion on these standards, it was identified that ISB is also working on a comprehensive insurance accounting standard, which eventually came out as IFRS 17. We understood that this overall, this overall approach of the standards revision might not prove to be, to be good in view of certain aspects. Number one, our conceptual framework and our financial accounting standard number one, which is actually our mother standard for all the, all the financial, financial statements preparation and presentation and disclosure, was in the process of, of revision. We were revising the conceptual framework and we were revising the FAST one. We were revising multiple standards which may also have an impact, like for example, we revised between FAST 33, which, which is a revision of FAST 25 on investment in Sukuk shares and similar security, similar instruments. So, there were multiple aspects of the standards that were being revised and some of the important aspects that we addressed during those included Wakala, al-Wakala Billistas Mar, on which earlier we did not have a standard, we issued standard number 31 on that. We, we, we considered the control issue in multiple standards, including the framework, FAST 31, FAST 29, which is not yet final. It is an exposure draft form and certain other standards where we believe that the definition of control and its interpretation in the Islamic finance aspects is something that actually drives the accounting for different stakeholders. So, considering all these factors, it was decided that Takaful project should be slightly deferred. Number one, to make sure that we align it with the new FAST, IFRS 17. Number two, we align it with the new framework and new FAST one as well as we align it with the new changes in our other standards like Wakala and investments in shares Sukuk and even, even FAST 30, which is again, one part of IFRS nine, that is provisions and expected credit losses, impairment expected credit losses and on this commitments etcetera. So, general provisioning, what we call from the conventional standpoint. So, this background, I, I believe is important to understand from where we are coming up and what are the, what are the contributing factors to the new two standards that are being presented in front of you. The first standard is on the general presentation and disclosure for the Kapun entities, which we issued as exposure draft earlier. Then, the second one is on the accounting for, for Takaful, which is, which is more like, more like addressing the IFRS 17 equivalent requirements, but it is not limited to that. It actually addresses the specific relationship between the stakeholders and what is attributable to whom and a certain specific issue with regard to Takaful, for example, Farhassan, Wakala, Wakala, its accounting etcetera as well. So, we hope that the new standard that we have brought in with very great effort by, by our, our, our working group. It was a very large working group and we hope that what you actually, you actually get as a final result, Insha Allah, will be after this public important etcetera, it will be even better. We are holding some roundtables on that as well. One roundtable was already held. We will see after public hearings if there is a need to hold another roundtable. Eventually, we will be working on illustrative financial statements for Takaful as well to provide guidance. Again, that will not be part of the standard, but it will be providing guidance. The basic requirements are there already in the, in the new, in the, in the, in the new presentation and disclosure standard, but there will be more requirements hopefully of guidance, not requirements, guidance available in form of illustrative financial statements. So, with that, I can see there is one, one, one question in Q&amp;A box. Okay, this is just a comment, brother. Thank you very much for your kind comment. Now, I can see another comment coming in here. So, we will first take comment on this brief sort of preamble that I have presented. So, we'll take comments on that. So, brother Awad Muhammad, thank you very much for your kind comment. We have a comment from sister, question from Sister Fatma Handawi. I would like to know if these new standards will contain a sample of the financial statements of Takaful under 17. Sister, I was just saying that, that actually, actually what we are doing is, number one, when we say Takaful under 17, IFRS 17, actually, we would say that we, the whole purpose of having this standard, these two standards and particularly the second standard is to say that IFRS 17 is built-in for, for commercial insurance and not primarily for the Takaful model. And from that perspective, actually, the financial statement, basic characteristics are going to be there in the standard. As I mentioned just now, that illustrative financial statements, Insha Allah, will be provided in due course for the purpose of providing additional guidance, but that will, those will not be containing requirements. Those will be providing guidance only to interpret and apply that. But with regard to, with regard to IFRS 17, our answer is that our, our, our standards are a replacement of IFRS 17 in the specific context of Islamic finance. The core treatment with regard to IFRS 17 is more or less same. The main differences that we require, as I will explain during the course of discussion, that we require the IFRS 17 related accounting requirements. I mean, that is the recognition and measurement related requirements mainly to be applicable on the participant fund, not the whole of the entity. That is the core difference. And I can mention that some experts, some experts even on account, on insurance, even coming from the conventional background, actually understand it. We were, we actually saw a presentation by an expert on insurance in the Kapul. He made, he actually reached more or less the same conclusion than he presented to the Islamic finance working group of IFRS. We considered group of IFRS, ISB also more or less the same comment. So, from that perspective, our answer is that, again, one more thing. When we see the sample of financial statement of the Kapul under 17, IFRS 17, IFRS 17 does not provide general presentation and disclosure requirements. From I, from IFRS perspective, it has to be IS one and other relevant ISs with ISs and IFRSs, which actually provide you guidance about general presentation disclosure. So, the sample of the financial statements will be there, but these points need to be clarified. Number one, the presentation and disclosure of the overall entity is not covered by IFRS 17, number one. But our general presentation and disclosure standard covers it and provides the basic, primary statements and their basic contents. Detailed illustratives, Insha Allah, we will be illustrative financial statements, Insha Allah, we will provide in due course. And Insha Allah, when we go through this discussion, you will have more, you can have more specific questions. Okay, so with that, if we have any other comments, any other general comments before we move to the standards? Any general questions, any, any general comments on the preamble that I have provided? Okay, there is a comment from Brother Staha Faroq. It is suggested that economic system of Islam may be base source and variation with present system may shift laws and knowledge towards that. Brother Staha, we, we, if you, if you asked us, we are trying to do that thing within the limitations that we have. Right now, we are living in a system that we cannot change overnight. And again, for that, you know, that is not something within our domain, that is in the domains of the comments and the domains of the, of the Muslim ummah as a whole. So, from that perspective, we try to do our part. We, we try to find our way out within the present-day system. We, we love to change the system. We strive our level best that if there is any possibility to change the system and move the whole paradigm. But, but right now, what we are doing is try to find solutions within Islamic Sharia, within, within the limitations, within the legal system, within the economic system, within the political system in which we are living. So, from that perspective, yes, we agree with you, but we have our limitations on that part and we need your help and support for everything. Okay, Sister Irsaa, Sister Irsaa from Indonesian Financial Accounting Standard Board, she has raised Okay, uh Sister Isha, uh Sister Isha from Indonesian Financial Accounting Standard Board, she has raised as a question. That is there any timeline from A O P when this standard will be mandatory? Is it the same timeline with I far as seventeen? Uh Sister, if we if we see the effective date right now, uh we have to decide finally on that. Uh what we want to do, we have discussed this thing in the board and working group. Apparently, we may allow one or two years more than I far as seventeen. However, we want to make sure that within this year, this standard is available. So that if any regulator want the entities to to in to apply it earlier. So in that situation, it it is available for application. So hopefully, uh from A O P's perspective, it may have one or two years of flexibility. But by the time it becomes necessary, hopefully, we will be making it available to the market. So any entity. That wants to apply, they can apply and particular because earlier earlier application will be allowed. Uh so with earlier application allowed, it may be applied with 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 I far as seventeen if the regulator wants or if the entities choose to do that. However, uh since uh since uh we are a bit late than I far as seventeen in developing the standard. So we will still be allowing a little bit time time lag. So probably it will be one or two years time lag allowed by A O P. Uh subject to regulators' decision, if they want it to be implemented before that day, they can take that decision. Or if the entities want to adopt it, they can take that decision. Thank you very much, Sister. Brother Stah, uh. Thank you very much for your comment. It's a comment, not a question. So thank you very much for your kind comment, Brothers. Okay, then we have a question comment from Brother Shakid Mahmood. I think one need to change lots of system to apply the new standard. I don't think earlier adoption would should be allowed. We should not copy I far as deadline. Uh thank you very much, Brother Shakid. We are not going to make it mandatory to make it like, you know, uh so that's why we will be. Uh we will be giving due uh uh due time. But brother, what our what we are afraid of? Uh you know, when we developed our financial accounting standard thirty. On impairment rated losses and owner's commitments, which is equivalent to Y far as nine expected credit loss model. Uh what happened that some of the regulators. Were taking a decision that if A O P doesn't have a standard, they will require even Islamic financial institutions to follow I far as nine. So from that perspective, we issued that standard by the time uh I far as nine became applicable. So the regulators took a decision. I think it was a decision by two regulators at least. That they decided that they want Islamic financial institutions to follow. Fast thirty because they want whole industry to be on the same provisioning requirements. That is the reason that we will we we again, most of our standards still allow earlier adoption. So there is no harm in allowing earlier adoption. Uh again, yes, our view is that we will be allowing one to two years and we will take your comment particularly with regard to the effective date. So I think the effective date on our 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 second standard is uh is uh. Uh it's twenty twenty four, first January twenty twenty four. And I think in the first standard was twenty twenty three, if I'm not mistaken, but we will be. Uh we will be aligning both of them. Both of them will be become applicable on the same day. So we are open with that choice. And and we we will be open with that. Just from our perspective, it will be one or two years and even uh we will we will love to learn from you. And all the participants of today's public hearing, what do they recommend? Shall we put one January twenty twenty four or shall we put one January twenty twenty five? I think more than twenty twenty five will be too much. So from our perspective, allowing one to two years. Uh if we finalize the standard by before end of this year, that is twenty twenty two. And twenty twenty three, we don't make it applicable and twenty four onwards, we make it applicable. That is in our mind. It can be even twenty five. But the point is that we are afraid that some regulators will require the Kafal entities. To follow I far as seventeen because they want market consistency. In this situation, it. It will not be good for Islamic financial institutions to follow I far as. Rather, rather, it would be good for the Kafal entities to go for early adoption of our standard. So uh so with that, still, we would like to learn about the view of the public hearing participants with regard to the effective date. As that they generally agree with one January twenty four or they want it to be expanded. But we will take your comment for sure. About not allow, again, one more thing, let me clarify. Whenever we take, whenever we get comments in the public hearings, we take those comments. Uh and we take them to the working group. If I provide an answer or if I provide an explanation. That answer or that explanation is actually for the benefit of the of the of the participants. But on a overall basis, it's not like that we just drop the point. We will take the point to the working group anyway. So we will take your point to the working group as a suggestion that it should not be uh linked with I far as seventeen or it's early adoption should not be allowed because of the. System requirements. Next comment is from Brother Noor Noor on Mecca to uh Assalamualaikum kindly shared the recording of this webinar. My email is this. Normally, we do not share the recording of the webinar. Uh I will check with our team, Brother Ridwan and Brother Sayed and Sister Farida if you can check if it is possible and whether we we. Want to do it. Otherwise, normally, we do not do it. We use it for our recording purposes of comments. But normally, we don't do it. So as a matter of policy, I cannot tell it. Uh I cannot I cannot uh be surely confirm to you now. But but I I feel personally no harm in doing that. Uh so maybe the team can discuss and decide and let you know. Brother Shakid Mahmood has another comment. Please do not leave the hands of the regulators. We will be left between I far as and FAS neither here nor there. Why should the Kafal industry be penalized twice? Thank you very much, Brother Shakib. It's an addition to your earlier point. We'll take it to the working group. And we will uh again, when we say we do not want the regulator, we we do not, we do not, when we put a date. Like twenty four or twenty five, it doesn't mean that we want to be implemented to be implemented before that. So our mind will be clear. But that situation would be worse if your regulators ask you to follow I far as seventeen for two years. And then move to FAS, our new FAS. It will be even more complicated. So again, A O P, A O P collaborates with lots of regulators and works closely with them. But at the same time, A O P cannot dictate its views on the regulators. So but we will take your point and we will try to explain it somewhere in the basis of conclusion as well. Brother Stah has another comment. Uh my fears are that it will lead to changes in Sharia interpretation. It's happening in Islamic banking practices. My one suggestion is to have separate central bank watchdog for the two practices. Uh brother, for me, there, if you ask me, I would say there should be no interest based system in this world. This is what is needed, not only two separate by separate work central banks. There should be one central bank. For Muslim countries that should be handling only according to Sharia. But again, this is, there is a long way to go and this is more about the political will. Uh let's hope for the best. Now we are seeing some countries who are abolishing and they are trying to abolish interest completely from their economy. Let's uh hope and let's 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 pray that their efforts become successful. Uh we hope good about Afghanistan. We hope good about Libya. Some other countries are actually thinking Sudan was doing that, but now Sudan is on the backtrack now. Go on a reversal track. So we cannot say anything. It is about the political will and Sudan is a good example of political will where. Uh legally, there could not be any conventional banks, but now they are allowing it. So we are actually afraid about this thing which is beyond our control. Uh we are here to do our part of the things and Inshallah will continue to do what we need to do, Inshallah. But for other things are beyond our control. Uh Brother Shakid Mahmood, twenty 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 five with twenty four parallel run would be good. If the Kafal F S cannot be compared with conventional anyway. Uh brother, uh it's a good point. We will take it to the working group that twenty twenty five as a as a as an implementation date and twenty twenty four as a parallel run. Recommended parallel run. I think it's a it's a again, it's a good point. We'll try to take it to working group. Uh and to find a find a good suggestion, Inshallah. Sister Fatma Handavi has another comment. When I read the exposures, I noticed the main difference was discounting receivable, which was not compliance with Sharia principle. Is there any new update solution regarding that issue? Sister Fatma, there are two type of receivables that that are that are there. One is established receivable which include a profit element. So we have allowed a deferred profit element like a Morabha sale, which has a deferred profit element. So we allow. According to Sharia, the receivable cannot be discounted, so it is not discounted. However, there is a deferred profit element. So we allow that deferred profit element to be kept as a negative asset with the with the total receivable and amortized over a period of time. This gives, this brings the accounting treatment closer to I far as, although it's not exactly as I far as. So this is one solution for where we have a profit element like this. But other places where we have established receivable and payable, we do not, we we cannot allow any discounting because this is a. This is one of the core Sharia issues and this is one of the fundamental differences between Islamic finance and conventional. Yeah, further discussion we can have sister when we identify specific treatment of certain items. For certain items which are really regarding the future estimate of liability. We have allowed the deferred cost element that is equivalent to the discounting element. So some treatments we have tried to bring closer without compromising on Sharia. Uh but where there is established receivable payable, we believe it cannot be and it shall not be discounted. Including Khaldhassan. What is the direct impact of accounting stand seventeen on the financial statements? Brother Anas Khair has a question of F F S seventeen effect. Brother, actually, uh for the life, the Kafal entities, we believe the impact is much, much bigger because the accounting treatment is much more complex and much more like no. Sophisticated. We shouldn't be saying that it is complex. We should be saying that it's it's more, it handles more details. It it covers. More and more aspects of accounting and it is uh more sort of uh more sort of, I would say. Uh sophisticated and comprehensive accounting. So there are difference, lot of differences with regard to the life of family Takaful. With regard to the with regard to the general Takaful or general insurance, still there are differences. But since the simplified model can be used. Uh because mostly the general general insurance or general Takaful will be eligible for simplified accounting. Then the impacts will not be that much material except for the onerous situations. Where there is a loss situation arising in beginning, it will be there. With regard to Islamic finance in particular, uh we believe that we have addressed certain additional aspects as well. So the. All answers to your question will be coming through the discussion on the whole of the standard. I cannot provide all the answers at one place. Brother Stah, Brother Stah Faroq has another question, but again, Brother Stah, you are going off track. Uh we are getting off track, so I will not be addressing your question right now. We need to talk about the current. Discussion points. So I have responded to your question separate earlier. But if and now I think because of the time limitations, we cannot address questions and comments. Which are not exactly on that topic of today, that is the accounting and presentation for the Kafal entities. Okay, we have another question from Brother Brother Saddam Saliti. Uh from Zamzam Bank Ethiopia, can this Takaful go in line with banking business? Uh Brother Saddam, I think you need to understand the Kafal business a bit more, so we'll we'll be able to like try to explain you going forward. But obviously. Uh a combination of a combination of of banking and insurance is becoming more and more formal common like bank. What is called bank assurance or bank attack Kafal. So we believe that the bank attack Kafal, uh that is the banks actually. Function functioning as a front end of the Kafal business is a very booming business all all over the world and we believe there is great opportunity in that. For that purpose, we need to do some background research on that and a lot of opportunities and lot of service providers are available for that purpose. Sister Fatma Handavi has another point. So any receivables not accounted for the Kafal contribution can be discounted. Can you give us a clear example? Sister, I am keeping your question live for now. As we reach the relevant treatment points. Then I think I will be able to address those questions. So right now, I'm not answering your question. Uh rather, when we reach the treatment, then we will actually be able to address it properly. Uh because right now, otherwise I'll be jumping my, I can well understand that you have read the standard and you are in a in a better position as compared to certain other participants. But if I jump to these points every time, so it will be a bit difficult. So we will be handling your question when we reach that point. Uh there is a point, there is a point from Brother Imad Abu Abu Ladas. Uh as I know, many Takaful companies in Saudi Arabia were implementing I far as seventeen. I think they issued the financial statements accordingly. How they compromise, how they compromise while still there is no solid and approved standard from I far as seventeen related with the Kafal company. Brother Imad, uh in a first thing, we need to understand that all Saudi companies are mutual insurance company, cooperative and mutual insurance companies, cooperative insurance companies. But all of them are not the Kafal companies. So first thing we need to understand. Secondly, we need to understand that the Kafal model. Uh as per Saudi Arabia is actually having a sharing model whereby the shareholders share the surplus. Uh from our standpoint, from day one. Uh the these entities who do not follow A O P Sharia standard, now we need to understand it's very important point and I think I need to explain this in advance. Before we actually open the standards and go through them. We believe that first thing, A O P makes a combined package. Like our Sharia standards are the core, then we develop accounting standards to reflect, record. Reflect and report and keep the trail of transactions of Islamic finance products and services in line with the Sharia standard. So the accounting standards. Are actually an addition and additional reflection of the Sharia standards. Then we have the governance standards which actually uh provide the rules and principles to have proper controls. And proper governance system in order to ensure that the Sharia principles and rules established by our Sharia standards. And the accounting related requirements, everything is implemented in a proper controlled mechanism. Then our auditing standards, including Sharia auditing standards, ensure that all these things have been implemented properly and there is a third party check on that. And with all of that, we believe that ethics remains the core, which is the spirit of Islamic finance. Not the not the not the legal form, not the paper thing, but the real essence. So what we believe on a overall basis, what we believe. Is that this whole package needs to be taken at the same time. So our accounting standards always say that they actually. They actually address the accounting for Islamic finance production services and for those Islamic finance product production services. How we determine what is the characteristics of those paraproducts and services is through the Sharia standard. So if so if we say that it is the Kafal, then this the Kafal has to meet the Kafal definition and the Kafal related characteristics of of. Of our uh of our uh uh our Sharia standard. So now the issue is that the accounting is a is a reflection of business facts. We we all understand that globally, there are four models of Islamic insurance. Uh three are called like, you know, the Kafal models and fourth is called cooperative model. Those called models of Islamic insurance which are claimed to be Islamic. Uh are are number one Wakala model. Wakala model is the main model which is covered by A O P standard. Wakala model means that. The core relationship of the shareholders, that is the Kafal entity. With the participants fund is that of Wakala, that is agency. This is the core model. This is the model which is there in A O P Sharia standards and this is the model which is primarily covered by A O P's accounting standards. So now, first thing we need to understand that this is the core model on which we are talking. The second model, uh which is a byproduct of this model, followed by some countries is Wakala WAK model. Whereby the core treatment, that is the relationship between the participants and the entity is that of Wakala. Uh this again, this again is a is a supplementary model of Wakala model. So we consider that it is still in line with the A O P Sharia standards. Since these two models are are actually based on agency relationship, so we conclude that the participants fund. Is not controlled by the entity and the participants fund has its own surplus and own deficit. And it it is to be considered as a separate entity, virtual entity. Or or a reporting entity from that perspective. And its accounting needs to be done separately from the accounting of the of the Takaful entity. This is the fundamental and now how this fundamental is supported from the accounting standpoint. The fundamental is supported from the accounting standpoint that even under I far as investment in agency relationship. Means that agent is doing the functions on a fiduciary capacity basis. It is not controlling the entity because control requires two things. Number one, power to govern. And that power to govern has to be for own variable returns. Variable returns include positive and negative, that is gains and losses. So in our Wakala model of Takaful, the parts, the Takaful entity does not enjoy the rights over the variable returns of the of the Takaful fund. Means that any surplus they do not, did not belong to them. And in case of deficit, they do not take the deficit. Although they are at times regulatory or by regulation or by their business model required to give Karthasan. But Karthasan is not compensation for deficit. It is according to Sharia, it is something to be paid back by the Takaful fund. So in a nutshell, we believe that Wakala model and Wakala Wak model are in line with A O P Sharia standards. And these models actually establish a agency relationship whereby the variable returns are not for the for the for the agent. And the power to govern is under a contract which provides the fiduciary power, not the sole power. Means the power exercised by the by the by the company over the participants fund's management decisions. That power of governance is actually in the capacity of in the capacity of a of a of a agent or a fiduciary capacity, not in the personal capacity or in the sole capacity. So the result is that we believe that our standard is aligned with our Sharia standard, which means that Wakala model and Wakala Muh model are properly covered in that. In Wakala model and Wakala Wak model is still the investment management can take place on Wakala Bilistasmar or Mudarba basis. But that does not change the core relationship of the insurance business or the underlying business of the of the underwriting business. So now coming to other two models of Takaful, of Islamic insurance. There are two other models of Islamic insurance, one is the Mudarba model prevalent in certain countries. And the other is cooperative insurance model. My objective here is not to say they are haram or not halal. My objective is that they are approved by their respective bodies. So we do not want to make a comment on that. But we believe that those two models do not fulfill the characteristics or meet the characteristics of our Sharia standard. And then again, and because of that, they also do not meet the control related criteria that we apply for the purpose of Takaful. So from our perspective, I'm sorry, I've taken more time on discussion of this point. But I think it's a very important theoretical discussion before we actually are able to understand how A O P's Takaful standards work. So we need to be clear on this part that any model whereby the shareholders share a surplus or deficit from the participants fund from our perspective is not in line with our Sharia standard. And from that perspective, is not subject to accounting under these standards, these two standards. So I have taken more time of this brother, but but we are we are concerned that any entity, any any insurance entity whereby the shareholder share the profit and loss of the participant fund is not eligible for accounting under this standard because this standard goes with Sharia standard of A O P. And from Sharia standard of A O P standpoint, any participants related gains or losses do not relate to the to the to the to the to the shareholder. And this is about the in, this is mainly about the underwriting part, mainly about the risk part. About the investment part, yes, there can be a sharing mechanism through Mudarba or Al Wakala Bilis. Again, while Wakala Bilis, we do not believe it's sharing, it's actually agency relationship, but Mudarba can still be there. But this criteria has to be applied on the main insurance business, that is the underwriting or the risk business. So I I think I have taken a bit of time on this point, but I hope that when we go to the standard, I do not need to repeat this part. Brother St, you have another comment on this point, so thank you very much for your kind comments. But the point is that we cannot take this question now because it's not related to the topic. Then we have a question from brother Mohammed Nawaz Mohammed Badruti. Does the standard covers Rita Kakaful aspect? Since we are dealing with Rita Kakaful and insurance companies, we are with the gift commission which needs to be recorded as per I F R S currently. Thank you very much, brother Nawaz, we have covered those aspects. And we will be highly appreciating when we reach those points, we will be highly appreciating if we get your specific comment as to whether you feel this response, the treatment that we have put in, responds to your your issues. And if you feel that further something needs to be clarified, needs to be done. But yes, for sure, we have covered Rita Kakaful aspect from both ends. Rita Kakaful accounting is also covered and the accounting for Rita Kakaful by the by the Takaful institution is also covered. We covered both of them, but if you need further explanation or further guidance is needed, that is the area where your comment will be very, very beneficial for us. There is a comment from a there is a comment from an anonymous attendee. So first thing is, and our request is that any anonymous attendee should always rename themselves. That is easy to answer then. The question is not very clear, are are can use reservation reservation in statement Takaful? To be honest, I'm I'm my apologies, I'm unable to understand this question properly. So my request is to please write the question more more in a more elaborative and more clear manner so that I can try to answer that. Brother Mohammed Jafar Iqbal has a comment on what is your view on the Turkish model? Actually, our issue is not to give views on the Turkish model or any other model. Our view is because, and to be honest, we haven't reviewed the Turkish model based on some discussions. I believe there are some issues that need to be considered in the Turkish model, that's my understanding. I think our 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 regulatory team is now in more in more in connection with the Turkish regulators. And I hope that in next next few months, we will be able to like, you know, work on that as well if possible. But to be honest, our answer is very clear that from our standpoint, we believe this is the Sharia standard. Anything that meets the Sharia standard criteria is subject to our accounting standard criteria because all our accounting standards are to be read with the Sharia standard. And I remember one of our mentors, who was who is a member of our governance board and earlier chairman of our accounting committee earlier in in Pakistan, I learned this thing from him. That he he said this, the most important part is to define the product. And what like he gave an example that when you say Murabha, so the people should know what animal is named Murabha. What is that? What are the characteristics of it? Once you define the characteristics, then you are able to actually determine the accounting treatment. So the same thing applies in our case that we do not want to characterize the products by ourselves. Rather, we characterize the products in line with our Sharia standards and only then we follow it. I think the anonymous attendee has mentioned the name Huda Saleh, welcome. Now we have another comment from brother Shakib Mahmood. In case of the Wakala model, that is agency relationship, why the regulators require the shareholders to give a compulsory Karthasan to support? And if the participants can't return back Karthasan in three years, then the right of it is in line. Is it in line with agency relationship? Brother, it's a very, very good point. You know, we are not living in an ideal world as we were talking with brother Ishta. So we understand that yes, there are issues with regard to with regard to the the real application of some of our products. We have addressed this issue separately. We believe that Karthasan is in a different capacity. Karthasan is not directly taking the deficit. It a surplus. My apologies. Surplus in any case is not attributable to the to the to the shareholders. Deficit is also not attributable. The only thing is that it can be, it can be considered that if Karthasan is given and then Karthasan is written off. So in 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 a indirect way, the the deficit deficit was taken by the by the by the by the by the shareholders. So this is, this is a, this is an argument. We agree that this argument is strong and some of the people say that because of the substance over form principle, it actually becomes a deficit taking. Again, surplus is not there, so we cannot say the whole of the thing is there. Secondly, according to Sharia, whenever upcoming surplus surplus will come in, the Karthasan will still be paid back. Even if it is accounted from accounting perspective, it is written off, it's still from the Sharia standpoint, it will be paid back. That the another issue, I don't want to touch on it. The problem is the business model of our Takaful companies. Normally what they do, they they charge a higher Wakala fee so that there is no 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 surplus. And then what happens that they they give Karthasan to 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 meet the deficit. So actually this way they make sure that they do not need to distribute any surplus. This is, this is the, you know, the mindset issue of our owners and managers of Takaful entities. We believe this practice altogether is wrong. Our belief is that 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 the regulator should not be saying that you should write of the Karthasan. Regulator should say that you should make a proper business model to identify as to how this Karthasan will be paid back. And for that purpose, you need to see whether your Wakala fee is justified or not. A O P will be probably working on a governance standard on that as well. But still on the accounting side, we address some of these aspects. Like with regard to impairment, we didn't say that it should be written off immediately. We said it should be impaired, but it should be based on a proper financial model of the future estimate of cash flows and based on that we should be doing it. And from my perspective, when I used to do Sharia audits myself for Takaful entities, one of my most important point was that wakil is a negligent agent. He is charging so much fee, he is charging so high of the Wakala fee, I have seen up to eighty percent Wakala fee. So he is charging so high Wakala fee because he doesn't want to have a surplus in the pool. And at times what happens that after charging the Wakala fee and paying the Rita Kakaful contribution, the starting point is a negative. So it means that fund will always remain in negative. I believe these are the first regulatory issues that regulators need to address. But yes, we understand it's a difficult industry. It's and again, the regulators need lot of, we have our brother Mohammed Kashif here, who is one of the best regulators here and he can he can make more comments on this part that regulatory management of Takaful and regulatory developing regulations and implementing those regulations for Takaful is not an easy task. And yes, we agree, these sort of situations that you are mentioning create some issues with regard to with regard to the Takaful model. But yes, we believe that even Karthasan given is in a different contract, in a different capacity, it is returnable. It is not a, it is not a gift. In rare in rare circumstances, there can be a waiver or a gift as well, but we believe it is not the right way of doing things. And we believe that the right way of doing things is that that Wakala fee should be on a on a on a on a on a justifiable and equitable basis, not on a higher basis. It will resolve most of the issues of the funds already. I want to be honest, it's like you know, nearly an hour is starting the session and we haven't reached the point where we opened that standard. But I am personally enjoying it, I am personally enjoying it. I hope that most of you might be finding these discussions useful. There are some very good points which are raised. But now I'm just thinking, shall I continuously continue this process to answer these questions first? But to be honest, keeping keeping it more interactive is better and I myself enjoying it. And I hope that I'm able to like clarify in your mind what, how. Again, some of the things that I'm explaining to you are explanation of what has happened in the working group and what has happened in the board. But it's still any important points that are related to the standard, not general points, points related to standard will be taken to the working group and to the board anyway. So thanks again for this thing, let me try to take a few more questions before I move to the standard. Okay, brother Altijani Ahmed has a point, salaam and thanks. I think we need to say few words about division, Takaful and Cooperative Islamic Insurance. Takaful in some places means life insurance in Sudan. We have two different regulators, one for insurance and one another different for banks, thank you. Doctor Altijani Abdul Qader, salaam alaikum, thank you very much brother for your kind comments. I we take we take your point and and from our perspective, from our perspective, the term that we have used is general Takaful and life or family Takaful. So from our perspective, it is like this and cooperative Islamic insurance, if it is real cooperative. Real cooperative means that if the shareholders do not share the the participants fund surplus or deficit, then again, let me be very clear, cooperative insurance is Islamic. If it sticks to the to the reality of cooperative insurance. The reality of cooperative insurance is all deficits and surpluses do not belong to shareholders, they belong to the participants. So if it is a real cooperative Islamic insurance where the shareholders do not share it, then I simply say that it is Islamic, we don't need to go for it. O I C Islamic Faith Academy original resolutions in nineteen seventies and and some other resolutions by some other like you know, even Hayatul Qubareel Alama at that time in nineteen seventies or early eighties in Saudi, some other scholars, they all were clear that the cooperative insurance is technically halal. The only thing is to to what extent that cooperative insurance follows its own principles. So we do not want to criticize again what Saudi regulators and Saudi Alama considers compliant. We don't have a problem with that. But what we believe, what is in the A O P Sharia standard is is the real Takaful model that we need to provide accounting for. So we are doing accounting for that part primarily. We have a comment from Paris Javed. Sir, in agency relationship, agent has to be appointed by the principal. However, in case of Takaful operator and the Wakala of model, Takaful operator appears to be a half self-proclaimed agent. Please explain, I want to identify the principle here in this model. Very good comment, very good comment, but there is no harm in having a being a becoming a self-proclaimed agent. I I I I remember, I remember I was having some discussion from on a lighter note. Let's take it as a as a light on a lighter note like a joke. I remember we we were discussing a similar point with somebody. And actually, one of the scholars said that if there is a person who says to another person that as your wakil, I am making, I am making, I'm 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 getting you married to this lady. So if he accepts that he is accepting this Wakala, then actually the 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 marriage contract will be valid. So so if wakil can, so there is no harm in being a self-proclaimed wakil because it is it is it is like, you know, again, the contract completes when the self-proclaimed agent says that, okay, I am your agent. And the other person signs that yes, but the company will be functioning as the agent. So from our standpoint, when the participant signs the participation documents of the what we what we generally call as policy documents, but do that technically the participation documents. When they sign the participation documents, the the agency relationship is established. Secondly, secondly, once the once the entity, I would say it should be the firstly, when the entity actually is formed, an internal agreement according to Sharia principles and rules is formed by way of the constitution documents. The constitution documents of Wakala of Wakala of Takaful entity clarify this relationship. And then there are Sharia fatawa and internal documents for that purpose. So we believe that the Sharia requirements for the purpose of become creating the agency relationship are completed. And as an answer to your question, yes, self-proclaimed agent can also become an agent if the principal agrees to that. Again, on the principal part, there is an argument. There are different Takaful models under, but however, generally we believe that the agent is not the agent of individual participants. He is the agent of whole of the P T F, participants Takaful fund. In case of investment, in case of investment, that is the participant investment fund in case of long-term life Takaful contracts, etc. In those situations, the Wakala Bilistasmar can be on individual basis as well. It depends on the on the on the on the actual contracts and transactions, how they actually are executed. However, for most purposes, we believe that P T F collectively is the principle individual particularly particularly for the underwriting and the and the risk business. And the original contract for of agency takes place between P T F, participants Takaful fund and the shareholders, that is the Takaful entity. So from that standpoint, we need to clarify and from our standpoint, accounting normally moves in this approach. So from that standpoint, uh we need to clarify and over from our standpoint, accounting normally moves in this approach. Uh brother, there is a comment from brother Navas Mohammed Badruddin from Sri Lanka. I am Navas from Sri Lanka and we do have local regulator. Uh thank you brother, we, we are aware that, that Sri Lanka has one of the old Takaful companies uh in the, one of the old Islamic banks and one of the old Takaful companies in the, in the world. So we highly appreciate the efforts of the local Muslim community in Sri Lanka. Thank you brother. Uh brother Shakid has a comment, my issue is with the compulsion. Brother, we are living in a world where a lot of things are not in our hand. I fully agree with you. The compulsion should not be there. And according to Sharia, the compulsion is not, is not, is not, it's not preferred. Compulsion should not be there. So yes, we agree from Sharia standpoint is a voluntary thing, it's not a compulsory thing. However, if there is a promise to make that in the constitution document, so in case of need, the promise becomes a compulsory or mandatory requirement to be fulfilled, fulfilled. So again, according to Sharia, giving a promise is okay, compulsion is not preferred. Uh yes, we know we are living in a very complex world, lot of things are prayed of between the two, between between, as brother Staff was mentioning again and again, we need to have a complete system. Yes, till the time we don't have a complete system, we will have to live with some of the compromising things. Yes, I agree with you. But, but because of that compulsion, the better thing is to change the model and price the, price the Vakalla fee and, and the ratio of the Vakalla fee in a better way, rather than actually blaming my apologies, blaming the entire world. There is a comment from Anur Naka To, I understand that shareholders should not have a share in the surpluses of the fund. Do A O F E Sharia standard permit participants to share in the surplus of the fund? Exactly, yes, A O F E Sharia standard say that the surplus of the fund mainly relates to the participants. Mohammed Navas Mohammed Badruddin has another comment, will, will the standard as, has I think as room has room to cover few areas which are applicable to few countries where the local regulators are not, non-Muslims. Where they have the same rules applied to Takaful and conventional mandatory comments such as page three deposit which given interest as the return. In these case, the, what are the Sharia and accounting standard? Brother, we highly appreciate the efforts of our Muslim brothers in those countries where the, the, the country, the, the country regulator, again. The country regulators in most of the countries either anyway are conventional, even in Islamic countries. So that's, that is, that is, that is actually happening in lot of countries even if they are a Muslim country. So, uh to be honest, these are, these are the realities of life with which we are going. Uh we believe that these requirements, if these are compulsion by the regulator and are necessary able to do the right transaction according to our Sharia standards, yes, still you cannot take that interest, you need to give it in charity. But if they do not make the model haram, so that is our understanding that model does not become haram because of these compulsions by the government or the regulators. However, any income arising on that needs to be given into charity, that is our understanding of the standards. Uh brother Abdul Karim Yahia has a point on Parth Hassan, how do we apply it on liquidity deficit or profitability deficit? Very good point brother, this liquidity deficit or profitability deficit point is a regulatory point or a governance point. We believe that this has to be addressed by the, number one, by the business model, number two, by the regulatory requirement and number three by the uh, number three by the, by the approach. It is not an accounting issue. Our accounting issue is when the Parth Hassan is given, what should be its accounting? So when Parth Hassan is triggered, Parth Hassan's triggering point is not an accounting issue. It is primarily, uh, it primarily a, 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 a regulatory and Sharia and a business model issue. One more thing I would like to clarify brother Abdul Karim here, we believe and this actually clarifies an earlier point raised by another brother as well. That we believe that, that, that Parth Hassan is a balance sheet entry, this we have clarified. So from our perspective, Parth Hassan is not to be directly taken as a contribution for, for deficit. Rather, it is to be provided to support to deficit. Similarly, from the regulatory standpoint, uh we believe as a regulatory standpoint, my belief and we discussed in the working group also, that the better is that the that the, that the, that the fund itself should remain solvent. So keeping the fund solvent means that it's not only the deficit, rather it's liquidity deficit. Rather, it has to be beyond that because the liquidity deficit will arise on a, on a, on a net cash basis while the solvency deficit will arise of the solvency requirements as well because solvency requirements are with a margin. So even Parth Hassan may be required over and above the deficit, means to maintain the solvency. So the triggering point of Parth Hassan, the solvency requirement, the liquidity deficit, profitability deficit or any other point of time. We believe that is not an accounting issue, so we did not address it in the accounting side. However, how it will be accounted for, how it will be impaired and what will happen about this return etcetera. Those are the things that we consider are accounting issues, so we address them in the standard. Again, a comment from Hoda Saleh, in, in subsequent measurement, less amortization of any deferred cost, if this is not, okay. Let, allow me to reach that point of time, we will explain that, okay. Al Tijani Ahmed, I mean definition, thanks, grateful for your answer and comment. Doctor Al Tijani will take that definition point to you, to the working group and the board, if they agree that definition needs to be inserted. Uh Takaful definition is there, but if we need to like, you know, explain further on that in line with what you are doing in stand, we will try to do that. Thank you many very much for your kind comment. Comment is noted. We have a comment from brother Hassan Jalali Levasani and Doctor Jalali from Iran. Thanks for you in webinar participant. I have two questions. What are the difference between the application of these concepts on the implementation of Takaful with conventional insurance operations? And what role does the need to pay attention to these difference play in the improvement and development of Takaful among Islamic countries? Okay, brother, brother Jalali, thank you very much for attending from Iran. Uh I just, I cannot hundred percent understand your question, but as I can understand, I can clarify. Because actually your question is about either having a, either having a system of Takaful going with the conventional Takaful or it's about a window of Takaful by a conventional insurance business. Let me address first the issue of Takaful in the conventional insurance business. We believe that the Takaful window within a conventional insurance business should be preparing a full set of financial statements as a Takaful entity. And those Takaful entity accounts should be, as a window, Takaful entity account should be attached with the accounts of the financial statements of the, of the parent entity. This is what we have clarified, not in these two standards, but in that, in the Windows standard, uh Islamic finance Windows accounting standard, which we issued recently. In the beginning of, in the end of December, I think we published that officially, few months back, that is published. Now coming to running the two concepts side by side, which is happening in most parts of the world. So actually, brother, brother Jalali, there are a lot of, a lot of issues actually are happening, arising. Some of the issues you can see, some of our brothers and sisters have been raising with regard to some of the markets where that both the concepts are going at the same time. Mostly what is happening is the mother law is the insurance law. So the regulator has to stick to the insurance law and try to, try to mold Takaful business to fit into that insurance law. This is the biggest problem in most parts of the world and we hope that things can improve going forward. With regard to Takaful improvement and development of Takaful among Islamic countries, brother, the first thing is that in most of the Islamic countries, we believe that the insurance penetration level is significantly low. Most, one of the important reasons is that public does not believe, first public does not understand insurance, but additionally, public does not understand the uh, understand, uh, the, understand the difference between Takaful and insurance and Takaful is not available at that level. Public does not believe insurance to be halal. So these are the issues where actually awareness, mass scale awareness is needed. I hope I was able to understand your question clearly, but if I was not able to understand your question clearly, I will request you to kindly put the question again. Brother Navas, your question is not very clear to me when it comes to P A R and non-P R model. What P R stands for here and my apologies, I cannot understand if you can explain it further. Brother Al Tijani Ahmed, shareholders are not eligible to receive anything from surplus are easy to say, but it is difficult to implement. Brother, this, this is very clear, I think any proper Takaful entity in, 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 in other than cooperative and Mudarba model, they are actually doing that. As Samu Bin Faiz has a point, brother Asanabin, in conventional insurance, the investment of premium is entirely at the discretion of the insurer with no involvement of a policy holder, where the prohibited elements of preby and messer also involved. So in Islamic insurance, how the premium is calculated? Uh brother, the premium calculation, we call, we don't call it premium, the preferred term, again, we say that at times it is called premium, but the term that we have used is contribution because premium is a, is an exchange contract while contribution is a non-exchange, non-commutative contract. So the first thing is that from our standpoint, the financial data for, used for both situations might be similar. So both of them may be priced in a similar manner. However, the pricing may, may impact due to certain changes. For example, risk related to Parth Hassan, the additional pricing related to Parth Hassan returns. Uh the, 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 the Rita Kafal at times is more expensive than, than the insurance. Uh the, the, the surplus needs to be distributed to the participants, so the premium, the contribution can be put on a higher side slightly. Uh but again, you have to remain competitive as well. So there are so many different factors, but again, this is not an accounting issue. This is a beginning bank, this is a, this is a, a, a business issue as to how the premium is calculated. And normally, we can, we see in, in, in different markets that in the beginning years, Takaful is charging higher contribution. But once the markets develop, the rate of, rate of premium in conventional comes very close to rate of contribution in Islamic. Reason being that, that they reach a reasonable scale, then they become more competitive and mostly the pricing becomes more or less the same. But again, it's not an accounting issue, so I, I have tried to answer you very quickly on this point. But further answers, I would not be able to answer on this further because of our limitation of time today.
Brother Ammar, uh there is a question came from Algeria, I think. Uh the Rahman Sunusi is asking, was there any attempt to set uniform standards for Takaful I T systems?
Takaful I T system, is it in the chat window? Because I can't see this question here, okay. Yeah, okay, first request, even, even, even the Arabic questions, if you can request everybody in the chat window uh that everybody should be putting the questions in the Q A window, not in the chat window. So the quick answer is, we believe that I T system for Takaful are needed. Uh but at, as this point of time, it's not the standard setting part of A O F E. For a banking, we have started, we like to know certifying the, the core banking systems which are eligible uh and, and capable of doing, doing accounting and recording and controls under A O F E standards. So we actually believe that this might be needed for Takaful as well, but again, it's not something that A O F E needs to develop a standard. Rather, A O F E need to certify those systems to be compliant and capable with the A O F E's standards. So it is the other way around, those software developers actually approach A O F E to get their system certified. But a separate I T standard is not needed, we believe so. Okay, brother Abdul Karim Yahia has a point, is it a requirement for the Takaful operator to seek permission from the participants to direct Zakat on their surplus before distribution or not required? Uh in Vakalla Vak model, Zakat is not required. In Vakalla model, it will depend on the Sharia board's views. Uh majority view of Sharia board is that since the contribution was made, so it has, it has gone out of the out of the ownership of the participants, so there will be no Zakat on that. That is, that is the general view. However, there are some scholars who have a view that surplus should still be subject to Zakat. But then this is a Sharia issue, not an accounting issue. So, so that short answer, I know might not be full answer for your requirement, but but this is, this will go beyond the scope of this discussion today. So I will not go beyond that on discussion on this issue. Brother Asa, Asamuddin Faiz, how does the profit loss distribution can be done in Mudarba model of Takaful? That is out of scope for us brother, so we will not be going for discussion on that point. Brother Shakib Mahmood has another point, please talk about the standard as some of us will have to leave, attend another meeting and we do not want to miss the excellent presentation of yours. Thank you very much brother Shakib for your kind comment. Uh brother, uh, we will be holding more than one public hearings. Uh so Inshallah, we'll try to let you know, the people can catch up in the next one as well. Uh again, I know that our time is getting squeezed because of these discussions, but most of the questions that I'm answering are relating to the topic and clarification on the conceptual part of the topic. So I believe that it is still worth it, but thank you very much and I'll try to move now as soon as possible to the standard itself. Brother Saddam Saidi, is there any basic difference from conventional accounting treatment for premiums contribution? Uh yes, there are some differences. Allow me to reach to the standard part and Inshallah we'll go for that. Uh brother, brother Navas, your, your issue about participating, participating insurance, now I can, I can, I can try to understand that. Uh the part, part policyholder may share in certain rewards when their policies, yes. So from our perspective, now I understand that actually when we call the participatory, participating policies uh in the life insurance, what is called as participatory conventional life insurance, what is called as participatory policies. Uh our model, our model works in a different way. So brother Navas, if you allow me to reach the standard and explain how the participant, the participant's investment, because we exclude the risk part from the investment part. I F R S seventeen has started asking the entities to exclude the risk part from the investment part. From our standpoint, from A O F E's standpoint, we always required this thing, but this is one of the important point that our earlier standard was more on the risk part only and was not covering the investment part. Our new standards are actually covering the investment part very clearly. Uh according uh the Takaful companies in different parts of the world were already accounted for the participants' investment fund separately from the risk fund. This was because of the Sharia requirements and this was not because of the I F R S. Because at that time, I F R S was not requiring this thing separately, but now I F R S seventeen requires this thing to be done separately. So we believe actually that, that A O F E was already ahead of I F R S in this aspect. So our participating insurance, from our perspective, the participating insurance normally is un bundled. Means that the, the investment component is identified from day one. Very rare circumstances, there is a bundled product, so we need to segregate that, still we need to segregate that part. We have, we have covered this in the standard, Inshallah you will find it. Thank you very much brother Navas. Okay. Now we have a comment from Cornelius Yee, how do we deal with the dilemma of regulators applying I F R S regime for standardization of financial reporting of auditors signing off? I F R S versus the priority of A O F E Sharia compliance, auditors do not necessarily sign off on A O F E. Now this is the biggest problem. On the accounting side, the problem is that at times, at times, you know, in the Sharia side, you can say, oh, we are still applying the A O F E Sharia standard even if it is not regulated required, but in the accounting, going beyond I F R S is difficult. Now for that, I believe, first thing, Islamic financial institutions operating in the countries where I F R S is the main regime should take a stand, that is first thing. They need to tell, this applies to Takaful and this applies to banking and this applies to all Islamic financial institution. They need to tell that we are different from conventional. They need to prove that we are different from conventional because, because the auditors will not agree that you are different if you do the same thing only by, by way of changing the bunch of papers. Na'zubillah, a bunch of papers cannot make a fool of, Na'zubillah Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. A bunch of papers cannot make fool of a common, it can make fool of a common man for some time, but not for long time. A bunch of papers cannot make fool of a common, it can make fool of a common man for some time, but not for long time. It cannot make fool of learned professionals like accountants and regulators and auditors. What you need to reflect is that this is the bunch of paper which is different from conventional, but this is the reality of my business. When you convince them that this is the reality of my business, then they will also be convinced. Let me give you an example. I mentioned briefly, in the Islamic finance consultative group of IASV, Ingras Account Extended Board, which we attended last meeting, which we attended sometime back. There was a presentation by a consultant on Takaful as to how IFRS seventeen needs to be applied on Takaful. And his view was that Takaful should apply, that IFRS seventeen should apply on the Takaful fund, not on the entity itself. Because he was able to understand the real business model. So now, this is the point where every professional related to Islamic financial institution need to stand up and talk to the regulators, talk to the accountants, talk to the auditors. That we are different and hence we require a different accounting treatment. So the first thing is, we need to go and apply AOF accounting standards because this is the right way of doing thing. So this is the responsibility of all Islamic financial institutions around the globe. If they want to truly reflect their business in line with Sharia, in line with the true and correct business practices, they need to stand up, they need to talk to regulators, they need to talk to auditors. That this set of financial accounting standard by AOF is the one that suits us. However, if it is not possible, then still they need to stand up and they need to say that even under IFRS, we need to keep the distinction. At least the minimum distinction needs to be there. So for example, if Murabha is a sale and purchase transaction, even under IFRS, it will be recorded as a sale and purchase transaction, like AOF. The problem is that we are unable to convince the regulators and auditors that actually we are doing a sale and purchase. They say, oh, you are just doing a bunch of papers. This is the problem. So because IFRS will go with substance over form, they will say, okay, your business reality is the same, you are just making a bunch of paper. So we highly appreciate this thing, that this is the core of Islamic finance, that our products are different, not only by papers, but also by reality. The risks and rewards incidental to different ownership stages are different. The real risks and rewards attributable to different stakeholders are different from conventional. In order to truly reflect that, you need to reflect the real risk profile of the assets, liabilities. You need to recognize the revenues from, at the time when they actually become due, not according to the IFRS while IFRS doesn't apply in our situation. Because if the transaction doesn't execute properly, there is no income to be recognized. So there are so many issues. Some of those issues, as I mentioned in the beginning, are identified in our book, AOF's publication, IFRS and Sharia based reporting. And particularly, the IFRS, AOF's conceptual framework for financial reporting also contain a chapter on identifying the main Sharia issues which are reflected into accounting rules. And this is the point where actually individual institutions need to take, you know, every institution collectively, they need to talk to the regulators and accountants that what is the correct accounting treatment for them. Thank you very much for a very important point. I have expressed my views and wherever AOF's guidance is needed, even in those countries, we will be more than happy to provide guidance to the regulators, accountants and auditors. For explaining even under IFRS as to how an accounting needs to be done if it has to be Sharia compliant. Mohammed Nawaz, Mohammed Badudin, again, in life insurance, when it comes to P R, non-P R model, how does the Takaful accounting treatment give, there is a surplus? Actually, brother, we believe that the insurance, the underwriting surplus and the investment surplus are two different things. So from our standpoint, we unbundle it and we put the investment component in the participants' investment fund and keep the risk component in the Takaful fund. And the Takaful fund surplus is related to the participants only. Investment surplus again, after sharing the ratio of Mudarib or Wakala, Vakil Bil Ismat, as per the model, whatever model is being used. From the investment component that is given to the entity, but the remaining part is attributed to the individual investment account, to the individual policyholders. So we have tried to cover it not in our style, when we reach those points, you can have like no more comments on that. Having the points and comments, I feel that we need to have two or three days discussion on these standards. But I am afraid that people will start running away. Brother Hassan Jalali has a point that can be a written summary of the topic discussed in the meeting to the participants for further use. Sister Farida, brother Ridwan, I think that today's discussion, again, lot of public hearings are very good and we have very good discussion. But I think from conceptual standpoint, today's discussions are very good. So maybe making a summary might not be that much easy, but making the recording available might be a easier option. Brother Imad, I think I responded to your this comment earlier. There is comment from brother Visam Hamdan, will the Wakala fee be calculated at the level of the policy and considered as part of fulfillment cash flows of the policy? Brother, it's a very good point and a bit complicated point, let me reach there and explain to you, because we did it slightly differently. So we have covered that aspect and will be appreciating your comments on that point, but allow me to reach there. Or the Wakala fee is calculated at the fund level and not on the policy level and therefore has another treatment, as I mentioned, I'll explain to you. The question is, that if Wakala fee has to be allocated distributed to policy contact directly or we have to allocate the actual expenses to policies? Again, we are asking for the fund accounting, not the policy accounting, but for, yes, we require for the policies, we require the grouping like IFRS. So let's reach that point, I think we will be able to explain that better when we reach there. So with that, I would move now to the standard and I'll try to first take the first standard. That is about the general presentation and disclosure in the financial statements of Takaful institutions. This is the standard that was issued first and I'll quickly take you through the important points. Again, when I take you through, the approach will be that this is the original standard, only presented in a PowerPoint presentation. The original draft standard that is already issued and which is available on our website and which is shared already with all the participants. What I will do, that I'll take you through the important points, I'll stop at the important points, I'll stop at important definitions, etc. Lot of things I've explained already. My approach will be that in next forty, forty-five minutes, I'll quickly take you through on this point. The main point here will be what are the statements and how the accounting moves through those statements. Then maybe we'll take a break for prayers and after that, we will be coming for the second standard, which is a more complex standard on the accounting side, that is the equivalent of IFRS seventeen. So with that, now I will, I'll start from here. I hope, no, I think it's not yet shared, I think I need to share it. Is it shared? I think, I believe that it is shared with you, all of you, you can see it. Okay, so this standard supersedes the standard number twelve, okay? And together, this is standard and the other standard supersede, the two standards supersede, actually, the four already issued standard by AOF. This one supersedes the standard number twelve particularly, but both of them will be applied at the same time. So you cannot adopt one of the standards and adopt the other standard at one point. Pre-face related things, I have mentioned, you know, we issued, originally standards were issued between nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and three. The four standards were issued, so effectively, it's nearly nineteen years, by the time the new one will become applicable, it will be nearly twenty plus years to the standards. So we believe that it's already enough time and particularly in view of IFRS seventeen coming in, it is high time that we need to do it. Brother Mast, I have, just if you can check the name of the board at that point of time. Sister Farida, take a note on this P R one about the name of the board at that point of time, we need to correct the name of the board. Okay, now, as I mentioned already, we stopped the work earlier because we were updating the conceptual framework and updating some of the other standards and IFRS seventeen was coming up, so we delayed. So most of these things I have explained to you already during my initial discussions. In the introduction section and P R section, I will not be, I will not be, I will not be like, I will not be discussing each of the points except for the main changes. What are the main changes in this standard versus the earlier standard? So the first important change, the presentation as this standard has been aligned with the Sharia principles and rules related to Takaful whereby the Takaful institution operator is distinct from the participant funds. The P T F and P I F are considered to be off balance sheet assets under management, therefore separate from the Takaful institution. One important thing is that participants' investment fund issue, I think, Sister Farida, we need to note it now, the participant investment fund was not specifically addressed in the earlier standard as well. I think we need to clarify that part of the main changes as well.
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, statement of the managed P T F and managed P I F, not management P I F, managed P I F. Sister Farida, please note it now, has been introduced, some of which are not part of the earlier fas, including a separate statement of financial position for managed P T F. For the managed P T F earlier, earlier the balance sheet or the statement of financial position was consolidated between the, so earlier means the current fas twelve has the balance sheet on consolidated basis. Income statement or the revenue account is separate for P T F and the shareholders. But the balance sheet is on a combined basis. We know and we highly appreciate that some of the Takaful companies actually make it on a columnar basis, that is a better treatment. But what we did is now that the participant Takaful fund, statement of financial position, that is the balance sheet, will also not be consolidated or not merged with the statement of financial position of the overall entity. Rather, it will be shown separately, so this is also one of the major changes. Disclosure for Zakat, charity and kath funds have been relocated to the notes in the financial statement. So these were considered to be primary statements earlier, but now Zakat, charity and kath funds, kath fund again might not be applicable on Takaful, so we need to see whether it is needed or not. But earlier, these were the statements which were there in the earlier standard. So in line with new fas one, we have moved them relocated to the notes in the financial statement. And Sister Farida, please note it down, fas one is revised twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty. New definitions for Takaful, Takaful institution, Takaful operator, P I F and the P T F have been introduced and the standard has been aligned with revised fas one. Now, one thing I need to clarify, the revised fas one provides the overall guidance for all type of Islamic financial institution. So its part A is applicable on all type of Islamic financial institutions, including Takaful. While the specific requirements for Takaful are contained in this standard, but some of the main requirements with regard to the basic accounting treatments and general representation and disclosure of financial statements are same with fas one. So we are not going to repeat that part, so this standard, this new standard needs to be read with part A of fas one. This is something very important for the regulators and the financial statement preparers and auditors to understand that this standard is a complementary standard with fas one and needs to be read with fas one part A rather than to be read in complete isolation. Objective of the standard, the objective of the standard is to set out the overall requirements for presentation of financial statement, the minimum requirements for the contents of and disclosures in the financial statements and a recommended structure of financial statement that facilitates faithful presentation in line with Sharia principles and rules for Takaful institution. Sister Farida, the consistent writing practice of the list should not have a comma before end. Scope, this standard is applicable to all Takaful institutions regardless of their legal form or size, including Takaful window operation. This standard is applicable to the Takaful institution while presenting consolidated financial statements as well as the standalone or separate financial statement. This standard does not apply to structure and contents of condensed or summarized financial reports prepared for interim financial reporting. I think, Sister Farida, just for the benefit of readers, we need to create references in paragraph two and paragraph four to the new standards.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, because this standard was issued before the two standards on the window and on the interim reporting. Interim reporting is still not final, it will be final Insha Allah next month. But we should create a reference to both of the standards so that the reader can directly access them. So we have, we have already issued a standard on window, window accounting. And a standard on interim financial reporting is being finalized now. So for the benefit of readers, we must be having a reference to both of them.
Okay.
The standard shall be read in conjunction with the requirements of part one applicable on all institutions of fas one, of general presentation, disclosure and financial reporting. Whereby the name of the standard will be updated. Whereby the requirements of this standard shall be considered in addition to the requirements prescribed therein with regard to general presentation and disclosure in the financial statement of all financial institution. The requirements of this standard shall however apply in case of a conflict between the requirements of the two standards. Because this is a specific standard, so it will override the general standard, but it is to be read with the general standard. Okay, I think we are having more questions in Q and A tab. Let me take the important ones which are there, okay, the first one. Can we have separate columns and then one as a total? Brother Shakib, I think the original treatment from AOF's perspective, again, we learn from experiences. So our framework is now clear, our framework says whether you control it or you don't control it. If you control it, then you merge it, if you don't control it, you don't merge it. So we believe, we believe that the Takaful institution does not control, again, control we need to understand. Control versus management are two different things. I can do management or I can do agency work based on agency relationship. Management work is not control. Control is where you control for, you have the power and the power is used for your variable returns. We believe that Takaful institution does not have power in its sole capacity, power is in the fiduciary capacity. So and the variable returns do not belong to the shareholders. That's why we believe that there is no control. If there is no control, then actually making columns and making a total is not the best treatment according to our new framework. So that's why we segregated the financial position of, that is the balance sheet of P T F from the balance sheet of the shareholders' fund. So from our perspective, as per fas twelve till the time new fas is not applicable, if somebody shows in two columns and makes a total, it's a good treatment. But once the new standard applies, then it will not be a columnar thing, it will be two different balance sheets. There is one comment from Jafin Abuskar about commissions, I think when we reach there, it will be better, we answer at that stage. Okay, now we are coming to the main definitions, owner's equity, the definition is as per IFRS, as per fas one. Participants, now this is important, participants' investment fund, P I F. Uh participants now this is important participants investment fund P I F. Now we are using the term participants. We are saying that policy holders is commonly used but from our standpoint the participants is the right term. So we are using first term as participants investment fund P I F is the fund managed by so first thing is we are not saying it's controlled it's managed. By the Takaful institution on behalf of participants collectively with the objective of making investments and earning returns thereon based on Mudarba or Al Vakala Bilistatma. Participants Takaful fund is the fund created by the participants with the objective of sharing risk whose management has been undertaken by the Takaful institute. The fund is entitled to the contributions and returns is subject to direct expenses provisions and reserves related to Takaful or to the Takaful operations and the surplus or deficit arising thereon. Parth also referred to as Karbhasan. Uh this definition is in our other standards as well but we explained it in the specific context. Is an interest free loan intended to allow the borrower to use the loan funds with or without prescribing a period of time with the understanding that the same amount of the loan funds in the original nature of funds for example same currency would be repaid when due or when demanded in case the period is not prescribed. Explanation in the specific context of this standard it refers to the interest free loan extended by the Takaful operator to the P T F to temporarily fund the deficit in the P T F. The insurance is a conventional contract according to which an insurance company seeds transfers part of the risk by its of its insurance commitments to an insurance company. The insurance company therefore intends to pay the insurance company part of the insurance premium paid by the policy holders against commitment of the insurance company to bear part of the claims as per agreements between the two parties. Uh read Takaful there is one definition in this one and there is a one better definition and the other one actually the other standard has updated definition so we will discuss that there. Takaful. Takaful is a process of agreement amongst a group of persons to handle the injuries resulting from a specific risk to which all of them are vulnerable a process thus initiated involves payment of contributions and donations and leads to the establishment of the Takaful fund that enjoys the status of legal entity from Sharia perspective and has independent financial liability. The resources of this fund are used to indemnify any participant who encounters injury subject to a specific set of rules and given process of documentation the fund is managed by either a selected group of participants or a joint stock company that manages the Takaful operations and invests the assets of the fund for it and then agreed fee. This definition is coming from the Sharia standard twenty-six uh from accounting standpoint the board has discussed and we might slightly amend or improve this one. Takaful institution is an entity processing the life possessing the license of participating Takaful practicing Takaful at times referred to as Islamic insurance business in line with the requirements of Sharia principles and rules. Uh let me clarify one more thing uh earlier standard had name was Islamic insurance. Now we are sticking to Takaful we are not calling it Islamic insurance to avoid confusion we say that at times it is referred to Islamic insurance but we are specifying more according to the characteristics of Takaful so we are using in these standards the term is Takaful only. The institution undertakes its operations based on a remunerated Vakala agency contract in addition to manage the Takaful operation the institution also assumes the responsibility of investing the funds of the managing of assets of the fund through Mudarba or investment agency. Explanation for the purpose of the standard at the Takaful institution includes the Takaful window operation. The notion Takaful institution unless context suggests otherwise includes Takaful operator and the participants. Now we had fast eighteen on the Takaful window operation but we now have a new windows standard for fast eighteen has been revised so the reference will be made to the new one. Takaful operator in the specific context of this standard represents the function of the Takaful institution whereby it manages the P T F and the P I F and from accounting perspective respect represents the residual part of the Takaful institution duly owned by and representing the equity rights and obligation of the shareholders or the principal owners of the Takaful institution excluding the P T F and P I F. Any comments on the definitions? Okay so now we move to the presentation and disclosure in the financial statements. So what will be a complete set of financial statements we believe that a complete set of financial statements of Takaful institution shall comprise of the following number one statement of financial position of the Takaful institution at the end of the financial reporting period so this is the balance sheet of the institution and it does not include the balance sheet of the P T F or P I F. B statement of income and other comprehensive income which can be a single statement or it can be two statements but because there are so many statements in Takaful so we are suggesting it to be generally of single statement so we are aligning there can be two statements but we are keeping it as one. This is also one of the significant differences sister Farida. Uh I think the significant difference list should be from the previous standard should be enhanced like for example we changed the name from insurance Islamic insurance to Takaful I think it will be beneficial for the participant similarly the uh the this is also one of the significant differences that earlier standard did not allow other comprehensive income our A O P's fast one and other standards were not having other comprehensive income concept which was brought in by I F R S like uh in two thousand and ten two thousand and eleven. So now our new standards I will be having the other comprehensive income part as well so system we need to identify it as a come as a seven of the significant changes as well okay. So this is again being allowed here. Statement of changes in owners equity of the Takaful institution for the financial reporting period. Statement of cash flows of the Takaful institution for the financial reporting period. Statement of financial position of managed P T F separately for general and family operations. So we are saying that the 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 financial position statement that is the balance sheet of the managed P T F should be shown separately. And also in most parts of the world where we see general insurance companies and family insurance companies or life insurance companies are diff are having a different entities. However, if one entity is doing both then we believe that because of the risk characteristic of both type of fund both type of fund should not be merged together and and a separate position financial position statement should be shown for general and family operations. And similarly there should be statement of financial activities now we believe that the that the P T F P T F is a not-for-profit entity technically mutual entity. So for that we are not asking a statement of income and other comprehensive income rather we are asking a statement of financial activities in line with certain other accounting standards uh that we have and other international global standards. So because it's not a profit a profit a primarily profit oriented entity so for that we have used the term statement of financial activities so it will be a single statement we do we are not asking for other comprehensive income for it separately rather statement of financial activities will be there for managed P T F again if the same Takaful entity is running two funds for general and family there will be two separate for that. Statement of managed P I F at the end of the at the end of the financial reporting period. Uh sister sister Farida I think we we clarified this thing during discussion that it will be having the movement also so it is at the end of the period but it describes the movement also so for the managed P I F we are not asking a balance sheet and income statement separately. Rather we are asking a simple sta- single statement which has the opening balance and the closing balance so it shows the movement also. So I think we need to clarify this word where in line with what we have done in fast one with regard to the uh statement of off balance sheet managed assets and and illustrated financial statement. Then there has to be notes comprising significant accounting policies and other explanations. So technically we are increasing the number of statements to reflect the true nature of Takaful operations in line with Sharia principles and rules and in line with the contextual relationship. Actually accounting we believe is about reflecting the 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 information necessary for different type of stakeholders and the risk and rewards and the and the and the and the balances attributable to different stakeholders so we believe that the right way of doing it is to identify and present the P T F statement and P P I F statement separately from the Takaful operation from the Takaful entity. Uh again the overall approach has not changed from our previous standard even our previous standard has this thing separate but we have clarified and explained some of the things in a better way like P I F was not explained earlier so we kept it separate because in the life insurance normally P I F is separately there similarly for P T F uh there was an inconsistency that its income statement was separate but its balance sheet was combined so we are making it consistent that's income statement and balance sheet that is in no financial position both shall be separate. Uh let me complete this section then I will take comments if we receive any comments. So present I can see one or two comments adding on presentation and disclosure in the financial statement financial statement shall faithfully present the financial position financial performance financial activities and cash flows of the Takaful institution and the managed funds. The assets liabilities and owners equity as well as income and expenditure gains and losses of the Takaful institution shall be presented separately from the assets and liabilities and surplus deficit and related income and expenditure gains and losses of the managed P T F or the managed P I F. The general presentation and disclosure requirements of fast one will also be applicable uh now coming to the complete set of financial statement we have provided appendix to provide further details on that. Now coming to uh accounting policies and estimates in addition to the accounting policies as per part one of fast one that the Takaful institution shall disclose significant accounting policies including particularly the policies related to segregating recording and reporting the funds pertaining to P T F and P I F separated from operators fund recognizing deferment and amortizing own contributions now. This is something that uh that some of the inconsistencies between the first standard and the second standard are there because the second standard is in line with I F R S seventeen so when we finalize both the standards we will be aligning some of these things in line with uh the second standard this is something because it was a very very long project very comprehensive project so uh first we decided to complete the general presentation and disclosure part so things that are appearing in the second standard that is the uh I F R S seventeen equivalent standard are is more are are more updated as per the working group and as as the board. So some of these things will be aligned with the uh new this accounting requirements as per I F R S seventeen so that accounting policies for the contributions all these things will be in more in line with the uh with the with the I F R S uh with the new standard which is aligned with I F R S seventeen recognizing claims and claims etcetera recognizing deferment amortizing Takaful business acquisition cost. Uh so same the acquisition cost we have divided when we reached to the second standard we have divided that into two. Uh acquisition cash flow separately from acquisition cost some parts are related to the shareholders and some parts are related to the investment account holder so we are keeping them uh both options. Uh then recognizing commission earned from the Takaful institutions uh recognizing releasing contractual is such a a contractual service margin the term contractual service margin we have changed to Takaful residual margin so we will be aligning that as well so some of the parts of this standard will be aligned with the uh second part of the second standard which is the second part of the project so once we finalize and issue the standard these things will be there. We request you if you mean feel any inconsistency between the two standards uh please let us know now or you can send us comments in writing as well because uh again I would say that it was a huge project very complicated project dozens of meetings of the working group multiple meetings of the board were there to actually address these issues. Uh we have gone through workshops and roundtables it still it is a very complete comprehensive thing. We are trying to uh to find the best solution for the markets for that we will be highly appreciating receiving your inputs including particularly if you find any inconsistency between the two standards we will do our part of work when we finalize the standards but we request you to provide any comments anything missing anything inconsistent anything contradictory to other requirements please let us know. Then accounting for transfers and derecognition between the funds and transfers between the funds and derecognition recognizing relevant share of Takaful business from two Takaful and other arrangements uh particularly where where there are Sharia principles rule involved for co-insurance arrangements. Recognize Karbhasan and its measurement etcetera the accounting treatment for Karbhasan etcetera we have added more in the standard number two but Karbhasan accounting its impairment uh etcetera and both the books are important but that is the book of the operator as well as the book of the P T F. Recognizing income tax its effect related to funds if it is applicable current and effort uh these are uh these and and the unnecessary explanation etcetera. Uh recognizing Vakala fee and Mudarib share timing of recognition deferment amortization accounting policies are required some guidance we have provided in the other standard with regard to these accounting policies. Recognizing and accounting for income gains and losses from investment in line with relevant files and identifying differences in classification of investments etcetera. So in line with mainly it will be in line with fast thirty-three unless there is a uh unless there is a misaccounting mismatch so we believe that accounting of all the investments will be done in line with new fast thirty-three. However, if there is a risk of an accounting mismatch in those situations uh even I F R S actually for a insurance accounting in case of accounting mismatch that you need to you need to consider the accounting treatments so uh so same applies to our standards as well that accounting mismatch needs to be avoided and for that purpose uh the accounting policy it can be different from the accounting policy for the normal entity. Uh with that the effective date for this one was one January twenty twenty-three for sure as I mentioned because this was issued earlier the second one has the first January twenty twenty-four. The date will be twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five depending on the comments that we receive from the market. So we take comments here uh again we have let me let me quickly go through the transitional provision there are some transitional provisions uh that we believe are important for providing flexibility in movement then there will be some amendments to other standard that is standard number twelve will be replaced by this standard. Uh then minimum components that what are the minimum components of the financial statements. So these are again uh these are these are put in the appendix not put in the body text. The reason was that the board wanted to allow some flexibility with regard to the components. Uh so let me take comments till the body text and then we go to appendix so I think there are few comments already there. Uh okay please uh there is a comment by anonymous attendee please when you say statement of financial position of the Takaful institution is it meant that Takaful operator only? Yes the answer is yes thank you for the clarification. Uh sister Fatma Handavi has another comment if a if a company doesn't don't have unit linked file life contract neither subordinate loans or participants is still necessary to have a separate P I F. Very good point actually for general Takaful it will not be required so I think I think where where necessary sister Farida please note it down brother Haru sister Farida please note it down it's a very good point. So I think one place we mentioned if any but whenever P I F requirement is there we need to clarify that it should be applicable if any. Now if any means that it applies sister Fatma it applies only when life Takaful for long-term contracts is there. Otherwise uh even for life Takaful for short-term contracts it might not be required like group life Takaful etcetera. So technically speaking your comment is well taken and we'll take that going uh we'll take it going forward. So uh so so we will clarify answer to your point is general Takaful will not needed family Takaful will also not need it unless they have the long long-term contracts having a investment component. Uh one part to clarify for the benefit of some of the participants P T F will also have its own investment. Because the P T F has the funds accumulated from the risk part that is the underwriting part is still those funds need to be invested for some point of time and return need to be generated. That is not P I F that is within P T F. And P T F at times most of the time has two contracts with the with the Takaful operator. First contract is the Vakala contract for management of the underwriting business which is the main insurance contract. The second part is with regard to the uh in men to the investment of P T F funds and getting and you know utilizing those resources in a better way. For that part even A O P standards allow that that part can happen based on Mudarba Vakala or Vakala Bilistatma so Mudarba is allowed for that. So if there is a Mudarba contract on the investment part of P T F that does not change the core relationship of Vakala which is applicable on the underwriting part or the risk part. Thank you sister Fatma for this point and I hope that I was able to clarify your point and I was able to clarify further issues which are arising from that. Okay I think there was a hand raised. Uh now question is brother uh brother uh brother uh brother Ridwan I believe that today uh there are so many questions that we may not allow our participants to talk because otherwise it will become too long. So I I would like to request that is brother Ahmad Ayan Ali who want to 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 talk and normally we allow our participants to talk. And normally we allow our participants to talk during public hearings, but today it's a very long subject and. And we have received already so many comments, more than fifty comments have already answered. So actually our request is to have comments only in writing uh for today only. Normally we allow our participants to talk, but today it will become injustice if we allow one or two of them to talk and not others to talk. So the request is today, let's keep it to the uh to the Q A tab only. So brother Ahmad Dayan Ali, my request kindly put your question uh in the Q A tab. Uh and our apologies for not allowing uh to to raise your question by voice or by video today. Thank you very much brother, thanks for understanding. Okay, so now coming to the appendix part that what are the minimum components, so this is actually. Uh this is actually like sort of a sort of a sort of guidance. We put it in appendix, it's part of the standard, but we put it in that appendix that what are the important things that need to be put in. So I'll touch upon the important parts only. Uh like there are, we uh these are some general guidance related point B two, B three, B four. Uh these are the general guidance. Uh that what are the general disclosures that can be there till B six, B seven, I'm not going to repeat them all if there are any comments. We are more than welcome to take those comments. But when coming to uh coming to some of the risk related, capital adequacy, solvency, all these disclosures, we have tried to put them. Uh put them here, now coming to what I want to cover now very quickly. Uh is B eleven onwards, again for for any points will be one to be tell if you have any comments, please let us know now. Or you can send them uh send uh send them to us in writing. But I think that statement of financial position etcetera are important that I would like to touch upon very quickly. Uh before we take a break, so the the these are the, this is, these are the normal components of the balance sheet of the. Of the of the financial position of the institution and when we save the institution pertaining only to the Kapal institutions owners or the Kapal operator part. Uh cash and cash and balances with Islamic banks etcetera, deposits with regulators, receivables from managed P T F and managed P I F. Kar Dhasan receivable from the managed P T F net of allowance for impairment thereon if any. Uh accounts receivable, investments in associates and joint ventures. Uh one point, uh accounts receivable are related to the Kapal institution, these do not include the account receivables against the contribution. Investments in associates and joint ventures, investments in real estate, investment in Sukuk etcetera, Sukuk share and other instruments. Investment in shares and other securities, P P E, uh right of use assets, intangible assets, income tax. Uh that is current and deferred tax asset, other assets with disclosures of significant types. Then uh then we have uh assets financed through quasi-equity, the relevant disclosure that is similar to fast twenty seven and fast one had to be. Provided, uh we we believe that normally quasi-equity will not be there, the quasi-equity can be there only in a situation where the Islamic. Uh the 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 P T F, the the Kapal entity is managing a P I F. Which is eligible to be on balance sheet instead of off balance sheet. If it is off balance sheet, then we will show it as a disclosure as managed P I F, but in some situations where there is a. Uh where there is a, there is a commingling or some other criteria of becoming on balance sheet. Uh in only rare circumstances, we believe it will happen only in rare circumstances. But because our framework allows that if a if a off balance sheet asset is actually uh commingled in a manner. With on balance sheet things or other uh situations whereby. Uh something becomes on, P T F will never become on balance sheet, let me clarify. The only possibility is that P I F can become on balance sheet if it meets the criteria of becoming on balance sheet. Because of the business model or because of certain other requirements regarding commingling etcetera, so in those situations, it will become on balance sheet. So we have clarified that option, it's a bit a rare circumstances situation. We don't think it will commonly happen, but we just keep because standard don't, our standards are not developed every day, so we kept this option open. Then we are coming to the liabilities part, we are talking about the liabilities due to managed P T F and managed P I F. Due to financial institutions, due to other counterparties, Sukuk liability type if they are issued by Islamic by Kapal entity. Uh gross Ijara liability, if they have Ijara assets, then Ijara liability etcetera. Then provisions that rules and other liabilities including declared but undistributed profits. Uh profits or uh dividends, I I think sister we should say declared but undistributed uh uh dividends. Not profits, yeah, not profit, not profit, it should be shown as declared or then distributed dividends. Then income tax etcetera, I think I think uh this numbering need to be corrected, either it's in the presentation only or it is also in the standard you need to check. But this numbering needs to be improved, correct it, okay. Then coming to quasi-equity, the the Kapal entity may have some Sukuk which are eligible for quasi-equity, they may obtain of financing based on Musharqah Mudarba or investment accounts. If if there are in circumstances they are meeting the investment, the definition of a quasi-equity, so in those situations, these are quasi-equity which will appear. Owners equity, common disclosures related to owners equity are there. And uh these are the additional disclosure which could generally be there. That was the first statement, coming to the second statement, that is statement of income and other comprehensive income of the Kapal institution. Vakala fee and share of profits of the Kapal institution for managed P T F and managed P I F disclosing the manner in which. And contribution and vakala fees recognized. Uh sister, unearned contribution here we need to check, unearned vakala fee is recognized and unearned contribution will not appear here.
This seventy eight.
Yeah, that, yeah, I think I think we need to check this seventeen A, it needs to be corrected, we need to check. Uh in line with the new, in line with new, a new, new approach, and particularly contribution might still not appear here. Uh because it's related to the Kapal institution only, income and gain from participating investments and investment in shares and other security income and gain from investment carried at fair value through statement of income. So these are the common invest uh statement of income, I am not going to re- repeat each of the points there. Uh if there are other off balance sheet assets under management other than P T F and P I F, that should also be disclosed separately and then admin expenses etcetera will be coming here. Uh then other other net incomes, zaka, income taxes, all these things whichever is applicable. Zaka again has to be referred to the other standard that we have recently finalized, so we will be making a reference. And zaka base and relevant reconciliation should be disclosed in white with a new phase. Then a statement of changes in owners equity of the Kapal institution, again it will be only the owners equity part, not the. Uh not the um uh not the not the part related to the equity of the P I F or P T F. Case cash flow statement also, we are talking about the institution's cash flow only, not the P T F or P T F or P I F cash flows. So the P T F cash flow, P I F cash flow will not be a part of it. But what we are saying in B twenty two, appropriate disclosures shall be provided as a footnote to the statement of cash flows or in the notes to the financial statement. With regard to significant cash flows pertaining to P T F and P I F. We believe that significant cash flows are actually P T I F and P I F cash flow, so they do not belong to the institution itself. So they should be disclosed as a footnote because they are uh important disclosures. But that is actually a disclosure either as a footnote or as a note, but it cannot be, we do, we are not asking them to be merged with the cash flows of the institution. Uh then we have the statement of financial state uh position of the managed P T F, which will include the P T F's assets, liabilities and P T F's net assets etcetera. P T F assets shall not be set up against participant's liabilities and participant's abilities shall not be set up against participant asset unless there is a specific requirement of relevant files. Uh significant items of P T F shall not be combined with the face of the income of the statement, they should be actually broken down as necessary. Amount of any allowances established to cover expected losses or impairment shall be disclosed. Uh and the assets and liabilities shall be in groups and subtotals shall be provided. Uh common assets would be cash and balances with Islamic banks, other Islamic financial institutions. Deposits with regulators, receivable from the Kapal institutions, pursuing the nature of the same, contribution receivable, net of allowance for impairment. Receivable from the Kapal distinguishing between claims and commissions. Uh other accounts receivable, investment in real estate and other common assets which are there. If P T F is also subject to tax means that if the entity is being taxed on a consolidated basis. Then the proportionate part of the income tax on the asset side and the liability side which relates to P T F should be shown here. Liberties again, uh due to the Kapal institution, uh this is the common amount due like vakala fee payable, but then. Ardh Hassan should be identified separate and the significant terms and conditions including the expected period of payment should be disclosed here. And due to financial institution, other counterparties and liabilities for incurred claims, provision for the remaining coverage. Some of these things need to be aligned in line with the new fast seventeen accounting policies, so some of these things, their caption will change in line with the second standard. Then Rita Kapal created balance including significant components, the provision that will another lab will be, components will be there. And then provision that will other liabilities, sister Farida, I think, I I think at the same time where it is there, I will need to check whether it's. In that, in the, in the, in the presentation only.
Yes, I will check.
Uh a reconciliation of the insurance contact balance like this, that is again the term need to be updated as per the new standard and the Kapal contact balance for both issued and health contracts etcetera. Even we are not using the insurance contract term, we are using the Kapal arrangement term. Uh this is the term, I I'll, when we start discussion, now the second uh standard will be discussing those points. Uh so then we have a statement of financial position, net assets are to be identified including the surplus or deficit and to whom they relate and any reserves maintained etcetera. So even if there are reserves or need to be identified, then we have the statement of financial activities of managed P T F which include contribution, vakala fee, Rita Kapal share etcetera. Some of these items as I mentioned will be updated according to the 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 general approach and the simplified approach in the. In the uh under I F R S seventeen, so that approach is covered in the second standard, so some of these aspects will be updated. In line with and aligned with the second standard. Then we have commission, Rita Kapal profit, profit sharing commission, gross claims and Rita Kapal share of gross claims. Other other parties share of gross names etcetera, so we are putting all these things, uh you know whatever are coming as our P T F's related expenses. And uh income, we are putting them all here, I'm not going to list now each one of them. Okay, if in in rare circumstances when the Kar Dhasan is written off only in that situation or if it is considered as a heba. So in that situation, it will appear as an income statement, otherwise it will remain in the financial, uh in financial position, that is a balance sheet entry. Only written off or waiver may come here. Then then vakala, vakala fee, uh vakala fee and all these things uh will be appearing here to and. Uh remuneration of party managing, management party, again, I think some of these terms, sister Farida, please note it down, these terms need to be aligned with the. Uh with the final terms that we are using in the second standard. Now statement of uh that financial activity shall also disclose in the in the movement in the accumulated surplus or deficit. This is very important disclosure that whatever surplus or deficit is there, we need to have a proper disclosure of that and we need to identify where it needs to be attributed. Any a profit equalization reserve or investment risk reserve with there if any, uh shall also be disclosed. Additional, uh these are the additional matters which are identified, I'm not going into detail for these. Then we have the statement, uh yeah, sorry, it it is continuing, so the extent of non-compliant insurance arrangement. Again, if there is any non-compliant uh transactions etcetera, including reinsurance which is conventional etcetera, these all need to be disclosed. Any non-compliant income charity etcetera all all to be disclosed. Now, this is the statement of managed P I F. The statement of managed P I F shall segregate managed assets by source, for example, those from managed investment accounts or investment units in managed investment portfolio. In addition, the statement shall segregate investment portfolios by type. The statement of managed P I F shall disclose the following, the opening balance. Uh the opening balance and then the, if there are investment units also, then units related disclosure is also noted dated. So what we have is required that if managed P I F has amounts and units, then disclosure of both amounts and units is needed. Then additional investments, purchase of investment units by the participants classified by type, withdrawals, withdrawals, repurchases. Uh cancellations, maturity, payments of deficit, some of these things are can be shown directly on the face, some of these things can be shown in the notes. But these are the disclosure requirements, then investments institutions share as mudarib or fee. Uh and then direct share, direct expenses related to operations of P I F if any, allocated overhead expenses if any. In line with Sharia principles and rules, we are assuming that these things are as per Sharia principle rule. Consolidated surplus of losses for managed asset during the period, the consolidated balance at the end of the period with the portion of the balance returning from revaluation of managed assets etcetera. Uh if it is kept as a reserve, impairment etcetera, movement and profit equalization reserve and investment risk reserve, the balance of managed asset at the beginning of the period. At the end of the period, it has to be end of the period, sister Farida.
Yes, brother.
Okay, so uh in case of investment funds having investment unit disclosure in terms of investment units may also be considered useful, so. If there are multiple funds, then maybe additional disclosure in form of uh, you know, main statement will be consolidated. But additional disclosure can be made or the statement, this statement is allowed to be in a columnar form. This is statement, actually the illustrative will have a columnar form statement, so this is actually. Uh actually acceptable in columnar form or it can be consolidated and the columns can be provided or for the details can be provided in the notes to the financial statement. Then about zaka if applicable on P I F, on P T F we believe generally that zaka will not be applicable, but P I F zaka may be applicable. And if there is an obligation that needs to be at least identified and disclosed even if not obligation to pay. Uh there are some additional disclosures with regard to relationship between the institution and the owners of the investments. Uh and mudarib, mudarib or investment agent etcetera, rights and obligations for each type of investment management activity. Uh the if it is on any secret mudarba including the rights of commingling P T I F of the institution own fund. The 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 rebuttable presumption is that such funds are under control of the Kapal institution. This is the situation that I touched upon earlier that in rare circumstances it can become on balance sheet. So we allowed it to be on balance sheet in these rare circumstances, not in general situation. And about again about Sharia non-compliant income and charity, another movement in charity fund etcetera, these movements are needed. Basis of conclusion, we don't need to discuss now, I will just see and and now the questions which we have received now on this part. So we have comment from deposits with regulators are shown in notes, are these have to be on the face of the balance sheet, I think we kept it on the face, brother Shakib. I think we kept it on the face, uh you can recheck it on the statement of financial positions, it is on the face. Uh zaka is generally paid by the shareholders in their personal capacities, so it needs to be communicated to the elder, but this, I don't want to go into this topic. We keep both options that in some situations it is to be paid and we are not talking about in our new zaka standard. We are not talking about shareholders only, in the new zaka standard, we are talking about all stakeholders, so we believe that even the P I F account holders and the shareholders all should be. Knowing how much zaka is payable, now if the regulatory requirement or the constitution documents of the institution require. The zaka to be paid by the institution, in that situation it will be paid by the institution and will be charged to income statement. If it is required to be paid by the shareholders or the participant by themselves, in that situation only a disclosure will be there. But the disclosure requirements are already there in our new zaka standard, I think it's number thirty nine. So uh so actually, uh actually, uh this standard will not be putting those disclosures. Rather, it will be just referring to those disclosures, but when we develop the illustrative financial statements for the Kapal, we will be providing those disclosures. We have a comment from brothers Visam Hamdan, please clarify why the difference between the two standard for the effective date, thank you very much brother. Uh we wanted to complete it by uh within twenty twenty one, so we wanted twenty twenty three to be applicable date in line with I F R S seventeen's extended date. However, now we are afraid that since the process took more time, it was very complicated standard. So the process took more time, so the effective date will be exactly the same, so it will be either first January twenty twenty four or it will be first January twenty twenty five. We will highly appreciate receiving comments from you and other respectable brothers and sisters today and even in writing. Particularly the regulators can provide us comments whether they prefer it to be twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five. Probably from our standpoint, it may be twenty twenty five uh allowing early adoption because those countries where. Early adoption, I F R S is being seventeen is being adopted, they may, the regulators may require it to be done. I have discussed this point earlier as well, so I'll not further repeat on that, thank you very much for identifying it. Uh ignore twenty twenty three, for sure it's not going to happen, it has to be either twenty four or twenty five based on industry participants. My feedback and our board's decision. Okay, with that, I believe that I have answered the questions received on this standard. So and it's a bit already uh like you know twelve thirty. So I twelve twenty five. So I think we need to have a twenty minutes break now till twelve forty five. Uh when we will continue our discussion uh on the second uh standard, that is on the on the Kafal uh Kafal accounting uh aligned with I F R S seventeen. So with that, I think we take a break from uh from now till twelve forty five behind time. So we meet in twenty minutes time, Insha Allah. Requesting all of you to keep uh keep your patience. It's a long, long standard, long discussion, long public hearing. So but but to be honest, personally, I have been enjoying it. Uh and I hope that the discussion was fruitful. We received very good comments and we will continue after that. So expecting that all of you, Insha Allah, will be continuing after that.
Assalamualaikum everybody. Sister Farida, I think we should start, it's time.
Oh yes brother, we've given three more minutes. We have hundred and two participants still joining, so I think we can start.
Actually, it's a very long marathon session, so thanks to everybody who is still sticking to us. And we hope that Insha Allah this whole discussion and some very good points that we receive will be help us in improving the standard, Insha Allah. So with that, I will start, A'udzubillah Minashatana Rajin, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Welcome everybody again and thanks to everybody for continuing for this very long session. We can still see Alhamdulillah, Mashallah, more than one hundred participants are still there. So this is, you know, this is something that we need to thank the industry and the regulators who are actually contributing greatly to the cause of AOP's work for the development of the industry. And we hope Insha Allah that this discussion will be fruitful, will be helping us in developing better standards, improving the draft standards and coming up with better and more adequate and appropriate treatments in line with the Sharia principles and rules, in line with the true nature of the Kaaful. And Insha Allah, these things we hope and we pray that will help the industry to develop better. With that, I'll, I'll take you to the second standard. Normally, we call it second standard, the standard is on accounting for the Kaaf.
The, what your audio? Your connection, okay, we lost your connection, perfect.
Can you hear me?
Uh, it's very slow brother. No, you're, it's paused. Maybe you have to rejoin because.
Okay, they are.
Okay, now you're clear. Yes, I think now it's okay. It was frozen and.
Can you, okay, can you all, can you all hear me clearly now?
Now it's okay, yes, now I think it's okay.
Okay, okay. So I hope it is better if anybody can, can from the, from the, from the, uh, from.
Okay.
Yeah, I think participants, participants now can confirm that they can hear me. So, so I was mentioning about the name of the standard that during my earlier discussion, I was just referring to it as as other standard or the second standard, the standard's name is, uh, the, the name of the standard is accounting for the Kaaful, uh, recognition and measurement. So this is the recognition and measurement part and this is our equivalent to IFRS seventeen. But technically it has more aspects than IFRS seventeen because it also covers the specific areas of relationship between the PTF and the PIF and the, and the Kaaful institution. So the specified account, special accounting suits with regard to Islamic finance are also considered therein. Uh, I hope that my voice is clear and all of you can see my screen.
Yes, brother, the screen is shared.
Okay, so with that, I'll first take you through the standard. I'm not going to repeat too many things that I have mentioned generally about that. Maybe, maybe some of the things only about the, uh, again, again, preface part and introduction part is mainly covered. But maybe, maybe some of the, some of the key changes part might be important about this. First thing is, as I mentioned earlier, FAS thirteen, FAS fifteen and nineteen on the, on the surplus, provisional reserves and contribution, this will be, these will be superseded. And as, as, as we mentioned that it is equivalent to IFRS seventeen, so more or less that IFRS seventeen accounting treatment as far as applicable to Islamic finance, particularly to the PTF part, are, 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 are covered in this standard. Uh, so what are the significant changes? Necessary impacts of conceptual framework and FAS one revised have been taken. Alignment of treatment, presentation and terminology has been performed with the earlier issued idea of this Kaaful. We are, we are, we are aligning them, still we need to, before we finalize, we need to still align that. The principal accounting treatment in respect of the Kaaful arrangements have been aligned globally external, global generally accepted accounting principles. That is mainly we are talking about IFRS seventeen and newer regulatory requirements in some cases. New accounting treatments have been introduced in respect of matters which are not addressed by the superseded standards or were not in line with the global best practices, but literally with regard to accounting for provision for the Kaaful arrangements and the accounting treatment representation for investment component. The PIF part was not covered earlier as I mentioned. The accounting treatments defined in the standard have been mapped with the Sharia principles and rules related to the Kaaful, including the rights and obligations of respective shareholder, stakeholders. New definitions for the accounting terms in line with the new accounting, accounting treatments are there. The accounting treatments have been introduced to, for, for ancillary transactions, as I mentioned, particularly the transaction, the balances between the different stakeholders. For example, a wakala, hurt, etc. Coming, coming to the objective of the standard. There are two comments, new comments, I think, some of the comments actually. Some of the comments were there which I kept open because they will be responded in due course. And some generally I have responded. Uh, as, there is one question about, about the attendance certificate. I think we provide attendance certificate on request basis. If you can put this question on the chat window, this can be addressed by our team. As brother, brother Sayyid and sister Farida, if you can put on the chat window, the process of obtaining that attended certificate for, for CPT purposes, etc.
Yes, okay, we will contact.
Yeah, so just an email address through which they need to get it and, and the process, okay. Okay, the objective of the standard, this standard sets out the principles for the recognition and measurement of the Kaaful arrangements and ancillary transactions with objective to faithfully present the information related to those that these arrangements to the relevant stakeholders. It shall be read in conjunction with the other standard, the first standard, that is the general presentation and disclosure standard. I, I, I just need my, 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 my watch in front of me because I know that we have now limited time. So I have to be a bit quick in this one. I know that there are a lot of complicated issues. We'll be more than happy to address those issues on individual basis as well, but if we receive comments in writing as well, it will be good. But for now, for the benefit of the audience, I need to keep my time, time, you know, in track. Let's go. This standard shall be applicable to a Kaaful institution and their managed participation, the participants, the Kaaful fund and managed participants investment fund. Uh, that is PTF and PIF in respect of a Kaaful arrangements, including the Kaaful arrangements issued. First thing, we believe that insurance is a contract and the Kaaful is arrangement. Why we are saying it that insurance is a risk, risk transfer and risk exchange contract means that the risk is sold against premium. So, and that is the reason that being an exchange contract, it is impermissible. Again, there are other issues as well. I don't want to go into detail why it is permissible or not. But when we see the Kaaful, it is not a single contract. Actually, it, it comprises of a whole arrangement. Under the arrangement, the first part is a contribution which is a non-commutative, single and single-sided contract, which actually makes such contributions. Then, then there, there are pooled funds which are pooled on the basis of the Kaaful. And then, uh, the, the pooled fund has the benefits paid. Uh, so instead of claims, we are using either the term benefits or claim for benefit as in case where necessary. So we believe that this, this is not a direct give and take agreement. It is not a commutative or a cumulative agreement. It is actually at first hand, it's a, it's a tabaro contract. And even when the fund pays to the, the benefits, the participants in case of their need, that is also a separate tabaro. So considering it, it is actually a combination of multiple arra, of arrangements. So we call it as a comprehensive arrangement of the Kaaful rather than insurance contract. So the name of, name of the standard actually, which was initially considered, was considered as the Kaaful contract, but then we decided it accounting for the Kaaful recognition and measurement. So this the Kaaful arrangement thing, uh, as a, as a caption is very important because fundamentally it identifies the difference between the insurance contract versus the Sharia compliant Kaaful arrangement. The Kaaful arrangement, the Kaaful arrangements, including the Kaaful arrangements issued, the Kaaful arrangements had investment contracts with or without discretionary features that are issued along with and being part of the Kaaful arrangements and ancillary transactions related to the Kaaful arrangement. So these are the, this is the scope of the standard. The Kaaful institutions shall not apply standard to guarantee contracts unless the insurer has specified them to be the nature of the Kaaful arrangement. We believe that guarantee is not a Kaaful contract in itself. It's not a Kaaful arrangement in itself unless a guarantee is issued as a Kaaful arrangement. Only in that situation it will be subject to this. Otherwise guarantees are not part of it. Similarly, the Kaaful arrangement where the Kaaful institution is the participant or policyholder, unless those arrangements are the Kaaful nature. So this is not the user accounting, this is the, this is the business accounting, not the user accounting. So these are the aspects where we do not apply this standard and this is more or less in line with what IFRS says. On the definition, the contribution is the gross amount that a participant undertakes to pay in respect of the Kaaful arrangement issued by a PTF. Entitlement period is the period during which the PTF provides entitlements for benefits to the participant. This period includes entitlements for benefits that relate to all constitutions and investment components where applicable within the boundary of the Kaaful arrangement. Fair value of future cash flows in the specific context of this standard of an asset of provision not being an established debt is the estimated value equivalent to the fair value of an otherwise permissible exchange of an asset or liability having similar cash flows with a knowledgeable willing party on an arms length basis explanation. For avoidance of doubt, it is clarified that the estimate of such value may take into account the considerations applied in similar transactions, including discounting of cash flows to arrive at the fair value acceptable to such counterparty. So what we have put in here, we, we are saying that unless it is established debt means established receivable or payable, there is a possibility that the fair value of future cash flows can take into account the discounting effect because this is the fair value which is acceptable to a counterparty on a, on a knowledgeable willing counterparty. So actually this definition is very important and it provides basis of accounting for a lot of provisions and assets recognition in this as, under the standard. Except for where there is established receivable or payable because established receivable or payable are not allowed to be discounted or, or there cannot be further actual on that as per Sharia. So that is the reason that we have clarified this thing. This is one of the important definitions that we have and we hope that this will be clarifying lot of doubts. Financial risk in the specific context of this standard is the risk affecting the fair values of future cash flows arising through a possible future change in one or more of a specific bank. Create investment to price, investment of biggest price, commodity price, currency exchange rate, index of prices or rates, credit rating or rating index or credit index or other variable provided that any non-financial variable among such factors is not specific to a party to the Kaaful arrangement. The concept is that from accounting perspective, the financial risk part is segregated by IFRS seventeen. We have kept accounting more or less similar to that. Our definitions are slightly different at some places, but they actually provide you more or less the same, same, same sort of treatments. Liability for incurred claim is the obligation to investigate and pay valid claims or benefits against events that have already occurred and other incurred the Kaaful cost. Unravel arrangement is a Kaaful arrangement where the unavoidable costs of meeting the obligations under the Kaaful arrangement exceed the economic benefits expected to be received under the Kaaful arrangement. Participants also refer to as policyholder investment fund. These two definitions are more or less the same as we discussed in the earlier standard. Provision for remaining entitlement period is the obligation to investigate and pay valid claims or benefits under existing the Kaaful arrangement for events that have not yet occurred. So that is the obligation that relates to unexpired portion of the entitlement period. So whatever has happened is liability for incurred claim. This is a liability. We are not calling it a provision because it's, we believe it's more or less like established liability because the claim is due as of now. While the, the, what is remain for the remaining entitlement period is considered a provision. So again, you can understand that for provision, we have the discounting option, but for the liability, we do not have the discounting option. I would also effort to at Kar Dharsan, we discussed this definition earlier today. Reinsurance, we have gone through this definition earlier today, but re the Kaaful, we have the new definition. So I'll take it to this one because this is the improved definition over the RTR standard. Re the Kaaful refers to the arrangement among the Kaaful institutions on behalf of their respective PTFs and the management to devise a mechanism for the avoidance of part of risk. You know, part of the risk with the PTF may encounter on the, on the basis of such risk. On, on the basis, sister Farida just noted down, we need to recheck of device of mechanism for the avoidance or sharing. We will just recheck it because I think it was edited by Sharia committee at one point of time, so I don't know. But we need to just check whether it is avoidance or avoidance or sharing. On the basis of such arrangement, are it the Kaaful PTF which has a distinct jurisdiction personality and independent financial liability is formed through making contribution out of the PTF as a part of the contributions paid by their respective participants on the basis of tabaro. The re the Kaaful PTF thus formed assumes the task of covering risk of the risks encountered by the PTF. Explanation. Now the earlier definition that we discussed today for re the Kaaful is actually more or less we covered it in the explanation part. The Kaaful is the Sharia complaint consecutive to the conventional reinsurance having the distinctive characteristics of being issued on the same principles of the Kaaful and mutuality as indicated in SS twenty six and SS forty one instead of exchange of reinsurance premiums. The need for re the Kaaful may arise in respect of the Kaaful institution due to lack of sufficient capacity to take risks or because of regulatory requirements of the risk sharing with regard to the magnitude of the risk in the question. Note, for the purpose of this standard, the term re the Kaaful wherever the context suggests may include conventional insurance in line with the prevalent practices of the Kaaful institution in case of dire needs subject to Sharia principles and rules with adequate disclosure and respect of the same. Because we have not defined the reinsurance accounting, we have defined the re the Kaaful accounting. So if there is a, if there is a Kaaful company that because of an unavailability of re the Kaaful has gone for reinsurance, they need to follow more or less the same accounting treatment. So for that purpose, they will follow the same accounting treatment subject to certain disclosures with regard to the nature and subjective Sharia principles and rules. Risk adjustment for non-financial risk is the sustainability margin. Now this is very important part that non-financial risk part is the sustainability margin. Financial risk part is the, is the, is the, is the returns from the financial part, while, while the non-financial risk part is actually important and the risk adjustment for non-financial risk is the sustainability margin. So the non-financial risk, there has to be a risk adjustment element. So it is the sustainability margin the PTF needs to maintain for bearing the uncertainty about the amount and timing of the cash flows that arise from non-financial risk at the PTF, as the PTF fulfills the Kaaful arrangement. So to be honest, PTF should generally be keeping the sustainability margin and should not be going into negative. Normally, why the PTF is going to negative is because of higher wakala fee charged. So it addresses some of the issues that were raised to us today. That actually if the wakala fee is kept on a lower end, on a basis, on a too justifiable and just basis, equitable basis, then normally this issue of Kar Dharsan and all these issues should not arise because the risk adjustment part of the sustainability margin part has to be kept within the PTF. Then normally this issue of Karthasan and all these issues should not arise because the risk adjustment part of the sustainability margin part has to be kept within the PTF. Takaful is the process, uh this is the same definition, we are more or less the same definition. Uh so we, uh we, we will align, actually maybe only one or two words are changing this one, but we will align both of the definition, but we discussed it already today. Takaful acquisition cash flows. Now, I had touched upon this topic earlier a little bit that we distinguish two, two types. So Takaful acquisition cash flows coming from the, from the IFRS perspective, uh we distinguish them into. Uh what is an IFRS is not divided into what is related to the institution and what is related to the fund. While from our perspective, we divided it into two. So the Takaful acquisition cash flow arrives from the cost borne by PTF directly. So what comes to PTF isn't Takaful acquisition cash flow. Directly attributable to the first-time acquisition of a Takaful arrangement. Explanation, these may include costs initially borne by the PTF, for example, survey costs, initial medical costs, documentation, legal charges, tax or other security deposit costs, etc. But does not include one wakala fee to commission, uh wakala fee or to commission. Because it is generally borne by the Takaful institution against wakala fee in line with Sharia principle, the rule as well as regulatory requirements. Or the three directly, directly related taxes that did not constitute part of the contributions are to be recorded directly as a liability that is payable to the government. So this is one important aspect. We have an argument from, in the Sharia committee, there was an argument with regard to the commission. Because we believe that commission should be borne by the institution against wakala fee. However, there was an argument that in some institutions, and some regulators are okay with the statement that commission is borne by the fund. So we will highly appreciate if, if the experts attending today can send us written comments also in this area. Because this is an important aspect where we would love to listen to the market as to how they see it. However, our view generally as a working group and the board was that commission should be borne out of the wakala fee by the, by the. Company only and it should not be coming to the PTF. Takaful acquisition service costs. Now, as I mentioned that from IFRS perspective, it's only one thing, but from our perspective, we divide it into two. So the Takaful acquisition service costs are the cost borne by the Takaful institution directly attributable to first-time acquisition of a Takaful arrangement, which are not part of the Kapul. Acquisition cost cash flows as above. Explanation, these may include costs such as commission, documentation charges, which are not recovered from the participant, etc. Uh Takaful arrangement is a combination of non-commutative, non-exchange investment and or service contract or contracts entered into mutually by the participants of a PTF. Of a Takaful institution in order to provide mutual Takaful entitlement for benefits and ancillary services. Some of which may be by, with the Takaful institution as the service provider. Like for example, the investment management activity for PIF is done by the Takaful institution. So this is the definition of the Kapul arrangement. It's a very important definition and we would love to have comments from the, from the learned participants on this point. Takaful fulfillment cash flows is an explicit unbiased and probability. This answers the question by one of the participants. I think two of the participants as it's issued earlier. Is an explicit unbiased and probably weighted, probability weighted estimate that is the expected value of the fair value of the future cash flows minus the fair value of the future cash. Close that will arise as the PTF fulfills Takaful arrangement, including a risk adjustment for non-financial risk. Explanation, wakala fee to be paid by PTF to the Takaful institution is part of the future cash flow for such purpose and hence is included in the Takaful fulfillment cash flows. The Kapul institution, uh I think we, we have this definition already discussed. The Kapul residual margin, uh which is equal into CSM in the, in the conventional term contractual service margin. So we believe that it is not a contract and it's not a service. It's a residual margin. So we believe that PTF, from the PTF's perspective, uh calling it CSM would not be correct because it's not a service and it's not a contractual margin. So we believe it's a residual margin as per the arrangement. So it is the component of the carrying amount of the asset or liability for Takaful arrangement or a group of Takaful arrangement. Representing the unearned surplus or at times unrecognized net cost applicable in case of Rita Kaffal contracts held only. The PTF will recognize it as provide. Uh Sister Farida, I don't know whether it's a typo error in that presentation only, but if there has to be full stop and the PTF will recognize, shall, will, will recognize it. Uh shall recognize it. It should be shall recognize. I think we need to just check it and full stop is missing here, I think. Uh and maybe in the, in the presentation only or although in the, you just need to check. The PTF will recognize it, shall recognize it as provides benefits under the Takaful arrangement. Explanation, the Takaful residual margin is a risk sharing, in, in a risk sharing Takaful business is from accounting perspective quite similar to contractual service margin and can, under conventional. Risk transfer based insurance business. Wakala is the, Wakala is the definition coming from other standards. It's, it is the agency Wakala fee definition includes fixed fee and variable remuneration. So we can take comments till now, uh from the scope, objective and definition perspective. So if we have received comments, let me see. So Jefan Wisker has a point, commissions are supposed to be booked in SHF according to the UCD. Isn't this a contradiction with Sharia principle based on section ten-nine of Sharia standard? The insurance account shall bear the expenses and fee related to insurance activities. Uh brother Jefan, we, it's a good point, very good point, but we believe, we believe. That, that wakala fee is for, and for, for the management business. And the management business includes the marketing business. So we believe that administration, marketing, everything is covered in that. Uh but we highly appreciate your comment and we take this comment, but from our standpoint, it is not a Takaful business expense. It is a marketing expense and it is not necessary to get, get the business. It's not necessary directly for the business. Rather, wakala fee being, being the management activity fee should be covering it. And this is also one of the reasons that wakala fee is kept on a higher side, commission is charged in the fund and the fund always remains in the loss. So we believe that it's not only about, I, I'm taking wakala fee for the management. And then I say, okay, I'm taking the, I'm doing the management, but this one I want you to take directly. So the result is that the funds always remain in loss. So we want to have just and equitable treatment, but again, uh we agree that the primary concern is the accounting, is the Sharia and regulatory and business model. Accounting is just to reflect it. From our perspective, we believe that accounting should reflect it this way, but. We highly appreciate your comment and we'll take it even in the Sharia committee, it was discussed. So maybe in the final version, we may allow it to be done, uh by the, by, to be taken by the. Uh if, if it is, if it is, uh from our view, based on the Sharia committee discussion, what I can tell you. Yeah, it will be dependent on the wakala contract. So we believe that wakala contract, if wakala contact is general management contract, then it includes marketing. But if it specifically excludes that marketing and sales is not our service. And marketing and sales is a direct service to be borne by PTF. Uh if it is clarified in the wakala contract, in that situation, we believe that the, the commission will go to the PTF. But it has to be clarified in the wakala contract. Uh if it is not clarified in the wakala contract, then we believe that wakala is for management and administration. Which includes all these type of services and hence it's to be taken by them. So I think your point is very valid, well taken. Uh it was a comment by the Sharia committee as well. We are going to take this point to the board and we hope that the board will be clarifying that point. That if wakala specifically exclude this service, then it can be taken to the, to the PTF rather than SHF. And when you say brother that about the expenses and fee, we believe that it's not the expense of the, of the, of the activity. Sure, it's not the expense of the investment and activity. It may be again an interpretation issue, but as I mentioned, Insha Allah, we will address this issue. Thank you very much for a very valid point. Uh brother Vissam has a point, will the wakala fee be calculated at the level of policy or considered as part of fulfillment cash flows? I think you now got to the answer from the definition. We still have this point to be, you know, this is one of the points that the board and the working group have to look at, at it again. Because the way we had put in the treatment was slightly different, but from the definition, you might have found, found our answer. But we have done it in a different way. We haven't put it in one place. We have put wakala separately and other fulfillment cash flows separately. So the treatment, for the purpose of treatment, that will be more or less the same. Thank you very much for your comment, brother Vissam. And, and, and from that perspective. Yeah, we, we would, uh we would like to clarify that the treatment will include this, but from the perspective of how it will be done. It is shown separately, not shown combined. Uh further, if you still believe that further guidance is needed, please write to us. We will, uh either way, even if you don't write to us separately, we will still take this point to the board. That we need to be more clear with regard to the fulfillment cash flow part and we need to clarify, again, as I mentioned, the treatment is there. But the further clarification, if needed, we'll try to put in. Uh I think brother Imad Abu, Abu Ladas, your point is more, again, goes more or less to the same. Wakala fee has to be considered for the purpose of, we will not be allocating it to each contract. But when we calculate the unrest contract situation, the unrest, unrest commitment situation or the unrest arrangement situation. In that situation, we will be considering even in the context of each policy. But however, generally speaking, it will be accounted for on a global basis. Uh again, again, some of these things we had earlier discussions internally in the working group and share committee as well, that actually. It may depend on the individual contracts as well. Uh however, we believe that the real wakala arrangement is not between the participant and the, on the institution, rather it's between the PTF and the institution. Unless the business model is different. So however, uh we, from our perspective, for the purpose of unrest one, you need to take it. Uh you need to consider it. Other than unrest commitment situation, what we need to do is. Uh that we will be accounting for, accounting it for or generally on a global basis. Uh doing on a global basis, I think there is another issue that was raised to us. I think Sister Farida make a note of it, don't forget it because it was discussed earlier as well. That is that some of the institutions do it at, on a post facto or exenti basis. Means that they do it at the end of the quarter rather than doing it at, at inception or at the time. We believe that it applies on a, on a, on a, not on a end basis. But again, this is one of the issue that needs to be addressed towards finalization of the standard. Because some of the institutions actually change the ratio at that stage. So we need to be clear on that part. We believe at our, our end, at the working group level, we believe there is a uncertainty or gharar element in that. Our, our working group vice chairman also raised this issue several times, that this is actually a gharar issue if it is changed at the time. But this issue from our perspective, it is done at the PTF level, but it has to take into account each policy. If the policy level or the business level, it, wakala fee is different. Uh we, 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 we have seen this situation also that for the marine business, the wakala fee level is different from the auto business, car business. Or from the, uh from the medical business, health business. So in those situations, uh again, what will be the situation? I think we need to provide some more guidance. We received some comments in the pub, in the, in the, in the round table and we take all these comment and we'll try to make sure that we clarify it very clearly. But with regard to the unrest, unrest situation, yes, we, we are clear, unrest situation has to take into a, a wakala fee even at the beginning. The wakala contact implies fiduciary responsibility to our PDF. Are there specific Sharia dimensions with regard to fiduciary responsibilities or would conventional definitions apply? Brother, brother vocal, Nick, Nick, Nick and Hoss has a point. Thank you very much, brother. Very good point. Actually, uh again, I would say that our whole reflection of accounting is coming for the Sharia treatment. From the Sharia treatment primarily, uh the, 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 the relationship of wakala is clear. It is covered in multiple standard. We have a specific standard on wakala. There are multiple standards and then we have standard on Islamic insurance and Islamic reinsurance. All these standard, when we read them together, they are very clear with regard to the relationship on, as a wakil or as an agent. From our standpoint, we actually follow the Sharia definitions and we reflect them into accounting. Even, even from the conventional standpoint, there are some situations, particularly the conventional accounting standpoint, there are some situations where an agent is considered, is not considered to be an agent. For example, if it has a guarantee, if it has a, if it has any form of guarantee, if it has any form of undertaking, it has any form of continuing involvement, etc. This applies in different type of contracts. From our perspective, we believe that, that according to Sharia, combining two capacities in one is not allowed. So hence, if there is a warrant, a guarantee or a undertaking or a, uh in management involvement in different forms. We believe that those is still are, are, are more like, are more like separate arrangements and those need to be accounted for separately. And not combined with the capacity of the agent. So in that, to that extent, we are different from conventional. So the core principle of accounting, core principle of, of business relationship for the purpose of wakala and fiduciary responsibility and relationship is. Is same between Islamic and conventional, but when it comes to accounting aspects. Where from the conventional accounting standpoint, some situations are there where the wakil or the agent is considered. Not to be agent because of the involvement or some of the guarantees, etc. We still continue to believe that the person is agent and we keep the capacities different and separate. So from that perspective, we are slightly different from conventional. Otherwise, more or less our Sharia treatment and accounting treatment more or less are the same with regard to the agency relationships. I hope I was able to respond to you properly. Uh Sister Fatma had one point which was not discussed earlier. Now we need to discuss it. So any receivables not accounted for Takaful contribution. Uh, uh, it can be discounted. Can you give us a clear example of distinct between these receivables? No, we believe that one Takaful contribution is established. When the Takaful contribution is established, that is it become due, it can no level be, no longer be discounted. However, when you are calculating the fulfillment cash flows and all the situations for the future. In which you are taking the future Takaful contributions for as cash flow inflows and future payments as outflows. From that perspective, you can take the discounting effect. I hope I'm able to say, to clarify because it's, it's a very complicated thing, but in a nutshell. Any contribution that has become receivables today, not to be discounted. Contributions that will be recoverable in future. Uh to determine the overall fulfillment cash flows, inflows, outflows, when you determine and match them and you determine the margin and then you determine the. Unrest situation or the positive situation and then you multiply it. For all these purposes, you can take the discounting effect. But when the contribution becomes receivable, like for example, first January, my, my contribution was due. So first January, when it becomes due, it is now not subject to any further discounting. It has to be taken at a part by, bar value. I hope I'm, I'm able to clarify this one, sister. Okay, now part A is about the structure of Takaful. The first standard did not include this section, but later we decided to include this section. Uh the purpose of including this section was that while, while holding even the public, you know, even the working group, things were not clear. Even for our board, everybody was not in the board, everybody in the board, most, everybody is expert in Islamic finance, but some of them are not expert in Takaful itself. Particularly considering the nitty-grities and complexities. For sure, they understand Takaful and they can. Uh but, but every single individual in the, in the, in the, uh, in the, in the. Uh, uh, in the, in the discussions, the Sharia scholars who were there in the Sharia committee. So we, we felt that there is a need that we need to clarify the structure. This is very important that this is structure is, is the one on which we are, we are basing the, putting the foundations. Of what accounting we are recommending. So from that perspective, we decided to define the whole structure of Takaful. And sorry, it didn't come to my mind, but to be honest, it would have been better if we have discussed this one before actually going through the. Second standard, the first standard as well. So this is something maybe, maybe Sister Farida and Brother Harun, if you can take, keep in mind, maybe this section we need to repeat in both standards. Or we need to put in the first standard first and then refer in the second standard, refer to the first standard. But the point is that, that even the general presentation standard should have a reference to this one. Or it should be a cross-reference. We can keep it here and keep a cross-reference there. But this is important. So now what we are saying here, we are saying that what is a Takaful institution? What is the, what is the relationship of the Takaful institution and what is the structure of the transactions? And, and what is the Takaful fund, participant Takaful fund and what is its activities? What is the participant Takaful fund's obligation and its, its treatment of surplus and deficit and about Karthasan? The, then about the investment fund that is the PIF, what PIF is about and how it is managed. I'm not going to read it all. I suggest that all participants should have a reading of it if they feel any clarification. Or any further guidance is needed, please let us know. We'll try to incorp, incorporate that. But we believe that this, this part A is very important to explain the structure of Takaful and explain the. And explain the structure in a way that that the accountants and regulators can understand as to. How and why we are putting the accounting requirements that are coming in the ensuing ensuing sections. Sister Fatma has another point, when calculating T R M, it is allowed to discount a part percentage of contribution to handle the risk of not collecting it. Sister, like financial and non-financial part, we have to keep it separate and yes, discounting is allowed in that part. But the financial and non-financial part has to be kept separate from that perspective. More or less then accounting treatment becomes more or less similar to I F R S. Except for that it applies at the institution, at the fund level, not at the institution level. Brother Visam is a point in case of delay, a delay, a relation means, I think you are talking about delay, the issuance of. Of this, can we follow the I F R S seventeen as a traditional institution and apply and and if applying. That who will be converted to O F E standard when issues finally. Brother, I believe that I F R S seventeen will become applicable on first January twenty twenty three. We believe our exposure drafts are already available in the market so that the Takaful companies can get the things prepared. And we believe that that they will be, they will be available insha Allah before first January twenty twenty three. Or at least in beginning of twenty three, so in the in it means that it means that if any institution want to apply the new O F E standard in twenty three. It will be allowed as a earlier adoption permitted and if the regulator is required so. However, from the mandatory effective date, we will be putting like maybe twenty four or twenty five. We believe that we do not want to have a have a have have a transitional period in which Takaful entities follow I F R S seventeen. So our suggestion will be that don't follow I F R S seventeen. If you want to follow I F R S seventeen, better to adopt O F E standard in advance rather than going for that. Now, first thing, combining and separating components of the Takaful arrangement. What is to be combined and grouped and what has to be unbundled? So unbundling of non-Takaful components, a Takaful arrangement may contain one or more non-Takaful components such as an investment or service component. Normally in form of a separate contract or a promise to provide a good service. The Takaful institution shall separate and bundle their various components when when they are distinct and measurable. Where where sister sister Farida and bundles various components, that should not be here. Unbundle various components. Where different components are unbundled, the Takaful institution shall ensure appropriate contribution to the P T F, the P I F and the front and fee if any charge to the participant. Such unbundling of non-Takaful components shall occur before the Takaful component gets recognized in the books of P T F. And we know that these are complex accountings, but we try to write them down very clearly. But again, we will be more than happy if you feel any clarification, any further guidance is needed, please let us know now or through comments in writing. So that we can clarify it further. The accounting treatment of non-Takaful components shall be made according to respective phases as applicable, see paragraph on three four of phase one. And paragraph seven of of the new O F E framework. Accounting for accounting for a group of Takaful arrangements. The Takaful institution may elect to present a set or series of Takaful arrangements, especially with the same or related participants as one or whole, one whole arrangement. After determining that the rights obligation, risk and reward as well as eligibility for surplus distribution are similar in nature. It is more or less in line with I F R S except for one thing, eligibility for surplus distribution, this is specific to Takaful. This election shall be made once the Takaful institution has made an assessment that combining the Takaful arrangements will be faithfully present the accounting treatments and overall commercial effect. After ensuring that the combination is not in conflict with Sharia principles and rules. I F R S also allow grouping, we also allow grouping. Our standard and I F R S is written slightly in different style, but both of them allow grouping. A Takaful institution shall aggregate the Takaful arrangements into distinct portfolios that are subject to similar risks and are managed together. Arrangements within a product line are expected to be in the same portfolio if they are managed together. Whereas the arrangement in different product lines are expected not to have similar risk even when managed together. So the management is not the only criteria, it's also about the risk factors, even the vakala fee may be different, even the surplus distribution may be different. So these are the factors that need to be considered, so marine and auto should not be considered like you know as as a single business. Level of aggregation, the Takaful institution shall divide a portfolio of issued Takaful arrangements into groups. At the minimum of arrangement that are onerous at initial recognition, arrangement that have no significant possibility of subsequently turning into onerous. And the remaining arrangements in the portfolio. A set of arrangements shall be determined to the onerous or to be to be onerous or have significant possibility of subsequently becoming onerous. When the Takaful institution makes an assessment for the set of the arrangements based on reasonable and supportable information. If reasonable and supportable information is not available for the company set of the arrangements. Then the determination of the group to which the Takaful arrangement belong to shall be based on assessment of individual arrangement. Where general approach is applied, the Takaful institutions shall make an assessment whether any events are onerous at initial recognition. Or have no significant possibility of subsequent general or subsequently turning onerous. The assessment shall be based on likelihood of that any change in assumption which if occurred would result in the Takaful arrangement turning onerous. And estimates provided by the Takaful institution, the internal reporting system. Level with when the Takaful institution is making an assessment whether the Takaful arrangements referred to in paragraph twenty four are not onerous at initial. Any recognition but have a significant possibility of subsequently turning onerous. The information collected by the Takaful institution, internal reporting system shall be considered and the Takaful institution is not required to gather. Any additional information. Subdivision of groups, a Takaful institution will subdivide the group based on different levels of profitability or different possibilities of arrangement turning onerous after initial recognition. Arrangements shall not be included in the same group if they are issued in more than one year apart. So this may be even based on number of years as well, that the group for twenty twenty, group for twenty twenty one, onerous group for twenty twenty. Not turning onerous group of twenty twenty, others for twenty twenty, then onerous for twenty one. So there are different possibilities, I'm just putting a few examples, but these are different possibilities. And again, again, it has more complexity involved, so we understand that further details have to be addressed by the. By the actuaries, they better understand this issue and 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 they will be helping the institutions in actually identifying how the groups need to be done. Timing of initial recognition, the Takaful institution shall recognize that Takaful arrangement it issues in the books of the P T F at the earlier of the date. When a participant become, when a participant become member of the P T F and accordingly become entitled to the Takaful benefits in form of sharing of risk. Which may be evidenced through either the payment of contribution or issues of Takaful arrangement documents. Or the date when the Takaful arrangement being part of a group or an unavoidable commitment to the Takaful arrangement becomes onerous. Even if it happens before the date applicable as per paragraph above. Sister Farida, check the paragraph number here. Initial recognition, the provision of a Takaful arrangement shall be measured at the total of the following estimates. Eight, Takaful fulfillment cash flows, which include the future cash flow for vakala estimate of other future cash flows. So this now answers the question more clearly that was raised to us that we it's still. It 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 has to be part of the total fulfillment cash flows, but it has to be identified separately and there are some separate accounting requirements. And it is to be applied at fair value, which is that future vakala fee is cash flow because it's not established yet today. So the future fast cash flow will be taken into account the discounting effect. An estimate of other future cash flows at fair value. And deferred cost being the difference between total future cash flows, including vakala fee and other future cash flows. And the fair value of the future cash flows which include adjustment related to the financial risk. And the risk adjustment for the non-financial risk, this is together, these are the things together that make the Takaful fulfillment cash flows. And what is the difference between what you get and what is the fulfillment cash flows that becomes the Takaful residual margin? So if you ask me whether Takaful residual margin is calculated on an discounted basis, my general answer is yes. It is more or less similar to how it is it is calculated in conventional. Reason being that it is an estimate, it's not established receivable payable, so it can be considered, it can be discounted. It can be based on a discounted value, this deferred cost part is actually the discounting effect. I know this is a bit complex part and I can I can well understand that that there are more complexities involved. Those who are actually our those accountants, auditors and experts of the Kafal who are actually more into these nitty gritties. If they feel any complication with regard to the wording that has been written, with regard to any application. They may they may feel free to write to us or provide comments now, even they can provide comments later. Now, measurement of the provision for Takaful arrangement, the Takaful is now right now we are talking about the general model, please don't forget. Right now, we are talking about the general model, this is the general model which is the complex model. The the measurement of provision of a Takaful arrangement at the initial recognition is continuing. The Takaful institution shall include all future cash flows with the boundary of a Takaful arrangement for the measurement prescribed in paragraph twenty nine. Such a measurement shall incorporate all reasonable and supportable information available without undue cost or effort about the amount and timing. By using a probability weighted means of the full range of expected outcomes and be reflective of the market variables. And is consistent with observable market prices for those variables. Like like those data which is generally available like mortality tables, other tables that are available, all data that is available without extra cost. Reflect the current conditions at the measurement date and explicitly not include the financial and non-financial risk. Unless the most appropriate measurement technique implicitly include financial and the non-financial risk. What we are saying that that these risk elements are to be segregated separately. Non-financial risk will be having the margin and financial risk will be having the financial in income, financial income and financial cost elements. The cash flows arising from substantive rights and obligation existing at the reporting date shall be considered within the boundary period. This shall be the period with which the Takaful institution can compel the participants to pay the contribution. Or in which the P T F has the substantive obligation to provide benefits to the participants. And substantive right will will be will will be hence when the when when the risks are assessed of the particular participants. And can set or reset the prices. I will not be going into all details of each of the paragraphs in further details, I'll be just be mentioning some important aspects. These treatments are more or less in line with I F R S. I'll try to identify the key differences that come to my mind during the discussion. One important point, liability on an asset shall not be recognized dating to an expected contribution or expected claim that is outside the boundary. Because that will be, that will be considered separately, at the competition shall adjust adjust estimate of fair value for the cash flows to reflect the sustainability margin. As we discussed earlier, bearing the uncertainty about the amount and timing of cash flows that arise from the non-financial risk. This is actually the margin that should that should keep the keep the fund itself as 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 a positive most in most situation. It needs to be clarified that Mudarabash, Mudarabash Share Wakala Fee Including Incentive for Investment Management shall be considered a part of the Kafal cash flows. And shall be a liquidity disclose and surplus distribution if any and waiver of carbon design if any shall not be part of the fulfillment cash flow. These are specific clarifications by the accounting board and I do not want to go into justification for that. Initial recognition of the Kafal residual margin, the T R M, T R M is a component of provision or net cost in case of certain rate of Kafal arrangements. Or of the Kafal element that represent the unearned surplus, so technically, T R M is the surplus or deficit. That but this is about future, so that will be recognized over the period of time, so what we need to do is that we need to amortize it over a period of time. In the long term contracts, again, general will be normally used, general model will be used mostly for long term contracts, so normally it will be amortized over the period of time. So the Takaful, the T R M shall be measured as a difference of amount of Takaful fulfillment cash flows as we discussed above. And any cash flows arising from Takaful arrangement at that date, so 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 the so the cash in cash flows and the fulfillment cash flows. That is the point that is actually the difference between the two is the T R M. It means that in day one, there will be zero revenue. Because the difference between the the inflows and outflows goes to T R M. So on day one, in the general model, day one, there will be zero income. In the fund, in the fund, now in the in the for the company, there can be an income. That is a treatment, that is the issue of the treatment of vakala, that how the company will be recognizing vakala income. That is, we have addressed separately in this standard, but from the fund's perspective, from day one, there will be zero income because the income will go to T R. Whatever the surplus or deficit is there, it will be go to T R M. Now, if it is onerous, if it is onerous, then the loss will be on day one. So it can have a day one loss, but it cannot have a day one profit. A Takaful arrangement is onerous at the day of initial recognition if the Takaful fulfillment cash flows and it previously recognized the Kafal acquisition cash flows. And any cash flows arising from the Takaful arrangement at the day of initial recognition are total net outflow. Applying paragraph twenty one, such Takaful arrangements shall be separated classified from the Takaful arrangements that are not onerous. A loss in the statement of financial activities of the managed P T F for the net outflow for onerous arrangement shall be recognized resulting in carrying amount of the provision. Being equal to Takaful fulfillment cash flows and the Takaful residual margin being zero. A significant number of onerous arrangement depending on the business realities may imply an inept potential negligence of the Takaful institution. And its capacity as an agent of the P T F, this is something that we have identified very clearly, it may particularly be more relevant where the vakala fee is excessive. In real circumstances, in line with the relevant Sharia principles and rules or regulatory requirements, such situation may require recording of a receivable from the agent. Such receivables shall form part of the Takaful fulfillment cash flows. So if the wakil is considered to be a negligent agent and it is considered to be a receivable from him, in that situation, it will become a Takaful fulfillment cash flow. In line with the requirements of paragraph nineteen, the Takaful institution may identify a group of onerous arrangements as a set instead of individual arrangements. Subsequent measurement, so that was in the general model, right now, we are going for the general model, that was the initial recognition part. Now we are coming to the subsequent measurement part within the general model. The carrying amount of the provision of the Kabul arrangement at the end of reporting period shall be the sum of provision of remaining entitlement period comprising of the Kabul fulfillment cash flows. Related to future period and T R M as of that date, again, this T R M is for the future date. So a liability for incurred claim comprising of the Kabul fulfillment cash flows related to past benefits allocated. So there is already a benefit due that also needs to be accounted for, so the provision is for the remaining period. And liability is for what has incurred. The provision for future plus liability for incurred today together is the total amount of the liability. The interim expenses shall be recognized in the statement of financial activities of the managed P T F for the following changes in the current amount of the provision for remaining period. Entitlement period, the revenue representing the reduction provision, so the revenue is as much as provision is reversed, it becomes a revenue. Expenses representing losses and any reverse of losses etcetera, onerous arrangement becomes a loss. Amortization of deferred cost, that was the that was the that was the financial element, that was the financial element. That actually is amortized, so it also comes to the income statement. Amortization of T R M for the period, so there was a T R M for the beginning of the period. And now there is a T R M for the end of the period, there is to be a amortization because the one year has passed, so there has to be an amortization. That amortization comes to income statement. In a statement of financial activities of P T F, my apologies, the income statement is not the right term here. This is the statement of financial activities for the managed P T F. It will also include the expenses representing increase in liability because of claims and expenses incurred in the period. Expenses representing subsequent changes in the Kabul fulfillment cash flows related to incurred claims and expenses. So this all will come to as expense of P T F. Subsequent measurement shall enter, take into account experience adjustments. So here we have clarified a bit of what experience adjustments are there because of these things, the change of the Kabul cost or the receipt of contribution etcetera. I don't want to go into detail of that, again, this is a very complex, very detailed standard and we are running short of time, so I have to be a bit quick. T R M at the end of reporting period represents a surplus which is not yet recognized. So this is the surplus which will be recognized over the future periods. The carrying amount of T R M at the end of period shall be calculated, shall shall take into account the carrying amount of the start of the reporting period adjusted for these things. So this is actually the the requirements. Some of the things, again, more or less it's in line with I F R S. How it moves is as per I F R S, except for the differences in accounting that we already have. Even exchange difference etcetera, these things are coming from I F R S. Only difference I would say is mainly about about the way we account for versus the way I F R S account for. I F R S account for in the income statement and we accounted for in the P T F statement of financial activities. And now I will be skipping some of the paragraphs which go into more detail, we are, I'm more than happy, I'll be more than happy to take the comments. But I'll prefer not to go into much detail in some of the aspects to save time. If a, if a subsequently, it becomes subsequently onerous or subsequent measurement changes, then, then it will be adjusted at that point of time. So this subsequent measurement for onerous arrangements is also needed from time to time, even their values need to be assessed that onerous amount, amount of onerous arrangement can change. So a subsequent measurement on that part is also needed in line with the original principles. Again, the loss component of the provision has to be systematically allocated and the provision for remaining period, so what is related to the current period and what is related to the remaining entitlement period excluding the loss component. These things are to be allocated on a systematic basis. I will not be going into some of these details, again, I know that some of you may have comments on these, we will be more than happy to take the comments, but in order to, to save time, I'll not be going in all this detail. The experience has suggested that today's time of four hours was not sufficient and I can still see more than hundred participants there, I, I can understand that we could not do justice with all of you. But I feel that it was a, it was still a good discussion in the beginning, so with this limited time, I need to be sticking to some very important aspects. So most of these changes, I would say that most of these changes are in line with, most of these requirements are in line with I F R S. Adjusted only for the treatments where we are different, we have kept a different treatment as, as I explained already, other than that, this is in line with that. So the subsequent measurement part is done, I can see a few questions, so before I move to the general, to the simplified approach, contribution allocation approach. I will, I will be like, you know, taking few questions here. The, one question that was received earlier by Huda Salay in subsequent measurement, amortization of any deferred cost is, this you not understand. I believe now you can understand that the deferred cost element was the element of the discount that was segregated and then it was allocated over a period of time and depreciated. This treatment actually takes you more or less to the similar treatment as per I F R S, but the way we have done it is slightly different. Again, we will be, we will be open to take further comments on this part, if you feel there is an error in that, please let us know. Particularly, we will be requesting some of the, some of the capital companies to do some number crunching once the standard is towards finalization, so we'll be requesting. A parallel run or, or, or like sort of a number crunching and identifying differences with I F R S seventeen if they feel that they can help us in, and, and. In improving and streamlining the things, we will be more than happy to get any further comments. Sister Fatma has a comment, but it is not conditional that a company should present Carthasan if T R M was in minus. Yes, from our perspective, first, when T R M, T R M become minus, it becomes an onerous, so it becomes a loss, so the loss situation is there. Accounting is not requiring a Carthasan to be paid. Carthasan triggering point as, 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 as it was raised by somebody else as well, that the point was that whether it has to be liquidity based or it has to be, it has to be. Liquidity based or deficit based, deficit based means that whenever there is a deficit in P T F from accounting standpoint, accounting deficit, so you pay a Carthasan of equal amount. The second argument was that if there is a funding deficit or liquidity deficit means that the, that, that, that the liabilities exceed the assets. Only in that case, Carthasan need to be paid, this is the second possible triggering point, the third possible triggering point is the solvency base. Which means that even not only receivable and payable, rather the solvency margin that needs to be maintained within the fund. Because, because, because some regulators actually touch upon this aspect and we believe that it is better to keep solvency within the, solvency margin within the fund. So in that situation, it will be even before that, so there can be three different triggering points for, for, for Carthasan. So, and, and we as accounting stand, setting here are not dictating which could be the triggering point. We are just saying that if Carthasan is there, this is the treatment and whether it will be considered a fulfillment cash flow or not and things like that, we are providing those clarification, we are not saying when to pay Carthasan. Generally speaking, yes, when T R M is negative, it will become onerous, it will become, it will become an accounting deficit situation. There should be and this will become a solvency deficit situation, so there will be a need for, a need for, for, for Carthasan. But if somebody is going by liquidity, maybe, maybe because it's just a provision, so as of liquidity level, they may not have a triggering point as of yet. So the triggering point is to be defined by Sharia business model and regulator. From accounting standpoint, we will define only what to do, but I believe that generally, yes, if T R M is minus, Carthasan might be needed. In this standard law, the standing which are in I F R S seventeen, if yes, if there are any difference between F two and I F R S seventeen, this is for a comment from brother Amar, Amar Rayan. As I, as I do, we do not allow discounting exactly in the main, in the way that I F R S seventeen allows it, rather our way of allowing discounting is different. We allow it, that some of the thing to be done at fair value and we allow some of the things to be done through whatever cost arrangement. So you need to go into details of this standard, of what I say that generally speaking, the results of, results of the application of our standard versus the results of application of I F R S seventeen. Would be more or less the same, so yes, generally, the results will be the same, but we believe that conventional discounting approach is not acceptable to Islamic. Rather, if we do discounting, that is not a discounting of receivable, that is not a direct discounting, rather it is, rather it is a fair value estimation model, rather it's a deferred cost model. So depending on the nature of the transactions, it is a deferred cost model or a fair val- fair value model that we applied in this standard in line with our framework and other standards. You may feel some complexity, but yes, we believe that in Islamic finance, that the pure discounting is not allowed. I do not want to go into debate to that point, as of now, we have got this debate long time in our framework and other standards. So I'll be more than happy to discuss it separately and as I recommended on the discounting, you can, of U F views on discounting. You can have a look at U F's conceptual framework as well as the book that I refer to, I F R S and Sharia based reporting where we have added the conceptual part. Okay, now we are coming to part C that is accounting for the capital arrangement and a contribution allocation approach, so in the contribution allocation approach which is the simplified model. It is, it, it first, there has to be a criteria. That what is eligible to be accounted for in a contribution allocation approach, so that is the first criteria, if you don't meet the criteria, you cannot have it. So that is the first thing, the second thing is that, that we believe that, we believe that mostly the general, general capital will be, will be eligible for simplified approach. So we have kept the criteria more or less similar to I F R S and we believe generally that general capital will be, will be accept, will be acceptable for the simplified approach. Not in all situation, but in most situation.
That's almost, yeah, six minutes.
Sorry?
We have six minutes to go.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I, 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 I've kept, I've kept the watch in front of me now. Okay, thank you for reminding, so again, now simplified approach, if you allow me to explain it in a simple way. And, in, in, in our view, simplified approach does not require a significant change in accounting from the present practices. Except for one major thing, that is the onerous situation. So if the onerous situation is there, that is you at the day beginning of the, at the beginning, you are actually entering into a negative cash flow situation. In that situation, the accounting treatment becomes different, that is my humble view, other than that, the contribution allocation approach is the simplified, as a simplified model is more or less in line with what the capital and. General insurance industry is doing as of now, so from that perspective, we believe that things are very simple, so at the initial recognition, you need to do the onerous arrangement. Or, or onerous or potentially onerous arrangement assessment, if the, if they are not, if they are onerous, then obviously you need to make up contribution, you, you need to make a provision. At, initial recognition, a provision for the remaining entitlement period is measured under contribution allocation approach as follows. The contribution received or receivable at initial recognition, less Wakala fee, less the capital acquisition cash flows. Add or less the amount arising from the day recognition of the, of any capital acquisition cash flows earlier. So on a, on a net basis, you actually calculate contribution minus, minus, contribution minus cash, acquisition cash flows and Wakala fee etcetera. So you'll come to the net contribution, I would say. Now, when you come to the net contribution, that becomes a liability as of the beginning day and this is recognized over a period of time. So it is like unearned contribution, like technically what you use to call unearned contribution in the old approach, it is more or less like that. In applying the contribution allocation approach, a capital institution may choose to recognize any capital acquisition cash flow as expense when it incurs those costs provided the entitlement period of such a capital element is not more than one year. So this is one thing that you can, if it is one year within one year, then even the expenses, cash flows can be recognized immediately as expenses to make it more simplified. Shall measure the liability for incurred claims for the capital arrangement, the capital fulfillment cash flows relating into incurred claim applying paragraph forty two and forty four. However, the, the capital institution is not required to adjust future cash flows for difference between cash flows and the fair value of those cash flows. If those cash flows are expected to be paid or received in one year, so even the future discounting effect, we are not asking if it is less than one year, so we are not asking it to be more than one year. In case of cash outflows are spread over a period more of one year and difference between the actual expected cash flows and their fair value is material at the capital institution shall adjust the carrying amount of the provision for remaining entitlement period to its fair value and she called, she records such difference initially at deferred cost. And at the, at the end of each subsequent reporting period, that carrying amount of the provision for remaining entitlement period is the carrying amount at the beginning of the reporting period. Add contributions received during the period, less the capital acquisition cash flows unless they are recognized. Amortization of the capital acquisition cash flows, recognizes expenses that applicable and less amortization of deferred cost, amount recognized as earned the capital contributions. Against the benefit attributable and less any investment component from the I F paid or transferred to the liability claims. So in a nutshell, it is also simplified models in which you determine that that was the initial recognition, this is the subsequent measurement. Even this significant subsequent measurement is simplified, the way of presenting in the financial statements is different from the way as we have been doing in past. However, considering the effect, we believe that the net effect of this one except for the onerous part remains more or less same. So we believe that for the general insurance and even for the life insurance whoever who can, who are eligible for a contribution allocation approach, that simplified approach, the effects will be immaterial. After that, we have the Rita Kafal section, it is a bit complicated, I am not going into detail for that because we are not having enough time and. Again, our apologies for not managing the time very well, but maybe this needed even more time to discuss. With that, I'll take you to the next section, for again, Rita Kafal, treatment more or less is in line with I F R S, we just aligned it with the changes that we have done. Now, there are some significant issues with regard to the capital which are related to the business model of the capital. Which include the separation of accounting records, we have required it that the accounting records of the P T F, P I F and the capital distribution shall be kept separate. Recognition of initial seed money paid by the, paid to the P T F, if it is, if there is a seed money, particularly in Wakala Vah model, there is a seed money always, but even in other situation, if there is a seed money that how it needs to be accounted for, accounted for. This is the requirement provided in this, this section, the, in the, in the hand of both entities, that is the fund and the, and the, and the entity. Then we have the treatment of transfer of assets between various funds and its disclosure. We, we, we say that according to Sharia principles and rules, they should be transferred normally on a fair value basis, on a arms length basis, so this is something that we have clarified here. That fund to fund transfer should be on arms length basis. Then we have the, covered the issue of surplus deficit determination and surplus distribution. Our earlier standard had this requirement, this guidance and when the Sharia standard has some guidance, so we have provided that guidance on the surplus and deficit here. Then we have the risk reserves in P T F created out of the capital surplus, so if there are, if there are risk reserves created out of the capital surplus instead of distributing the capital surplus, if the entity decides. That they want to create and maintain reserves, then what are the treatment and what are the disclosures for that, we are identifying and referring to our other standard that is fast thirty five. Then with regard to, with regard to, but we are saying that it has to be adequate level of reserves in line with our, in our fast thirty five. Then about surplus distribution, there are other aspects that we are addressing in this section. Surplus distribution particularly in line with our standard, then risk reserves in P I F in the investment fund, if there are risk reserves, how they are to be maintained and to what extent they are to be maintained. Then in this paragraph, in this section, we discuss about the Carthasan recognition and measurement in the books of the P T F and in the books of the, of the, of the entity. And about the impairment of that in the books of the entity, so this section is about that and about waiver of Carthasan. Then if there is a heba, normally we prefer it should, they should not be heba, it is against the concept of Wakala. But if in real circumstances, there is a heba, how it will be accounted for in the books of both parties. Then, then the Carthasan recognition and measurement in the books of the capital institution, how initial recognition and these things are done, subsequent measurement, expected credit losses, impairment. How these are to be done in line with our, so we have referred the impairment of that for, that into, to our fast thirty. That according to facility, if, if a receivable is subject to credit risk, then there has to be an allowance maintained, so we have put all those requirements here. And we have, the projection shall be there to assess the amount of the expected credit losses that need to be booked and again waiver and right of permission treatment has been provided. Then about recognition of Wakala fee earned from P T F in the books of the capital institution, how it should be accounted for, what are the aspects of accounting? What are the, like, you know, what are the services, like services initially are already delivered, services delivered over time, probable refund of Wakala fee. So there are different types of elements of Wakala fee, so we have identified that different elements of Wakala fee should be recognized in accordance with these paragraphs A, B and C. Then, then we have the capital acquisition service cost in the books of the capital institution, what are the aspects there and what needs to be covered? The commission issue as we discussed, we might need to consider that part as well, based on our earlier discussion today and the discussion with the Sharia committee. And then we have investment management fee and share of investment income from P I F and P T F, how it will be recognized based on, if it is based on Mudarba or if it is based on Wakala. Or Wakalabilistas Mark, how it will be accounted for in the books of the institution. And corresponding recognition by the P T F and by P I F, how they will recognize it in their statement of financial activities of their statement of managed funds. The capital institutions management fee and share of investment income from P I F, the allocation charges, this is an important issue, allocation charges of the front and fee by whatever name it is called. That is an important aspect because it is charged upfront, so how it will be accounted for by the fund and by the entities, by the respect, by the fund. By the fund if applicable or by the, or by the institution, so mainly by the times it is directly taken by the institution from the participants, so it will not be going even to P T F or P I F, that is what we have clarified. Taxation for P T F and P I F, I touched upon with regard to the disclosure part, we have, we have clarified that if there is a taxation element related to P T F and P I F, its benefit or, or its impact should be passed on to the respective P T F or P I F to keep. The things justified and equitable. So with that, we come to the, we come to the effective date, it is appearing as twenty four, maybe increased to twenty five, but apparently we, we, we will be keeping twenty four and again I will clarify. The other standard is put has a date of twenty three, it will be combined date of twenty four or twenty five depending on the market comments received and decision of the board. There are transitional provisions, transitional provisions because the general approach is very complicated, so the transitional provisions are more or less in line with I F R S. So we have kept more or less similar flexible transitional provisions. I'm sorry, I have taken four minutes above that, so with that, I can see right now, we don't have any comments or questions. At my end, I'll be, I'll be available, but, but if we can, if, because of the, it was already a long session, so for the benefit of participants, my preference would be that we conclude the session today. We will be holding another public hearing on this topic, you can join that one and you can make your more specific comments in that session or you can send your comments in writing to us. Thank you everybody for patient listening and, and, and there is one last comment that I quickly would like to answer, how do we recognize service rendered over time? Is it on actual basis or not? Yes, it is on actual basis, but what is service needs to be determined? The, the, the capital arrangement is not service, but Wakala fee is service, so Wakala fee, if it is against, against already, already done service, then it will be immediately recognized. Then it will be immediately recognized. If it is against future surveys like future admin expenses and claim management, it will be recognized over time. So yes, accrual concept will apply, but the matching concept, matching and accrual concept and the criteria of recognition will apply. Brother Saddam, I hope I'm, I'm clear on that part. Hassan Jalali, brother Hassan Jalali has another point, the file presented in the meeting to the webinar participant. Brother Hassan Jalali, this is actually only a presentation, the original P D F document has been shared already. I would request the team to share with you the original P D F document. This was only a, only a reflection of the P D F document in presentation. There is no change in the text. So, so I'll request our team to forward you, forward you the, it is available on our website. But I'll request our team to forward you the, 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 the present, the, the, the P D F files, both the P D F files. With that, I will, I will conclude. Sister, sister Noof has put in the chat window the, the, the link for the exposure drafts. With that, I would like to thank you everybody. Brother, brother Ridwan, you want to conclude or shall I conclude?
I don't think brother Ridwan is correct.
Okay, okay, brother Ridwan, go ahead to attend another meeting as well. So with that, I would like to thank you all again. For very, very, very interactive session, very, you know, lot of things, we were able to learn better. We were able to correct for ourselves and with that, I would like to, I would like to conclude the session with, with thanks to everybody.